I'm calling, oh, there's a little bit of echo. Sure, just one moment for audio workout. Okay, calling the June 13th, 2023 City of Portland Planning Commission to order. We have quorum with commissioners present. I'll go ahead and do roll here in the chambers, planning chambers. We have Commissioner Spivak, Commissioner Ralph, myself, Chair O'Meara, Commissioner Alexander, and Commissioner Patel. And online, no commissioners as of yet. So for the agenda today, we do have a slight shift. After we go through the consent agenda, we will be doing the training by PBOT and then discussion of bylaws. So with that, do we have a motion to approve minutes from the May 23rd, 2023?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, Commissioner Ralph, second. Commissioner Alexander, I will abstain, I was not present at that meeting. Does that mess up our quorum, though? I will withdraw my abstention. And all in favor? Hi. Okay, motion carries. And we will proceed now to invite staff up from PBOT, welcome. And please go ahead and introduce yourselves as you come forward, thank you.
Hi, thank you so much for having us. I'm Francesca Jones and I'm a senior planner in our policy team. It's called Policy Innovation and Regional Collaboration. I'm joined today by my bosses, and so I'll have them introduce themselves.
Hello, planning commissioners. Eric Hesse, UCM Pronouns, I'm supervising planner for Policy Innovation and Regional Collaboration.
And I'm Kristin Hall, I'm the Planning Division Manager at the Portland Bureau of Transportation, and I thought I might have just another second to eat my lunch. So sorry, I was sitting in the back and gompling some things down. But we're so delighted to be here today to talk about the Transportation System Plan and how we hope to interact with you as a new planning commission with the Transportation Planning Functions that PBOT carries out. I think Patricia is going to start us off with a little bit of framing, and then I'll jump in.
Actually, we do have some slides to share, too. Could you enable me to be able to share those slides? Screen. Okay. All right, so this is Transportation for Planning Commission. And these are the slides for you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, it is afternoon, commissioners. Patricia Deefendurfer, Chief Planner, Bureau of Planning Sustainability, for the record. We are joined here by our colleagues at the Bureau of Planning, sorry, Bureau of Transportation to talk about transportation planning, the policies, the comp plan, as we've been doing. So this is a continuation of training that we've been providing to the commission, kind of running through the different chapters of the comprehensive plan and helping the commission understand substantively what those policies are and then technically what is comprised in the, or what the comprehensive plan is comprised of, I should say, and particularly as it relates to transportation in this case. And so we hope that this will be very informative for you, particularly on the heels of the freight plan that you heard, that you had a briefing on at the last meeting. So just continuing to try to provide an understanding of the relationship of these different kinds of plans. And so as a, by way of introduction, this is nothing new. This is, I think the commission is completely grounded in this right now, but just wanting to kind of place this in the context of the commission's zoning code authorities that are, that are the purview of the commission. So you, these are familiar to you, there's essentially three powers and duties that the planning commission has in the zoning code. The first is the formal legislative process, which I think you all have become familiar with, and we've talked about a lot. This is where you hold formal hearings and you make a recommendation to the city council on various kinds of proposals, typically that update, amend the comprehensive plan, the zoning code, and a few other categories of actions that are listed here, like updates to the Title XI, portions of the Title XI of the tree code, for example, is one good example, street vacations, et cetera, are other examples. The commission also has this advising role in which the commission advises the city council on plans and policies regarding a host of issues that are represented in the comprehensive plan and that are of citywide and policy importance. And so some of the things that come to you are, as you saw with the, I think the freight plan at our last meeting was an example of this, of, an example of something that, you know, ultimately may have some comprehensive plan changes and implications, as we discussed, but the freight plan, for example, is an example of a plan that is really, you know, modal plan that is implementing comp plan policies, not particularly changing comp plan policies. And so we, a presentation, a briefing was provided to you as a commission as a grounding, as information, as background for, you know, some future actions that you might be, that you will be taking in the future. And we can talk about that more through the TSP, or Transportation System Plan, process. And then the last power and duty of the planning commission, as you know, is providing a forum for community members to learn about planning and to promote, you know, kind of an understanding of what good, sound planning is. And so everything, you know, that the commission does really is in service of this. This is a forum where even when you are not holding a hearing and taking in testimony, this is a public meeting in which people are able to join, come, or join online and learn more about the topics that are important to the city. So with that, I would like to go ahead and hand it over to the PBOT staff, who are going to take us through this training.
Great, thank you so much, Patricia. Oh, I was wondering about that, it felt like it wasn't on. Is it on now? Okay. Yep, the red light is on now, okay. So getting back in the habit of doing in-person meetings again, which is delightful. I love being with people, it's one of my favorite things, and so screens is not as satisfying. But we are here because we are stewards of the Transportation System Plan, and we work closely with the Bureau of Planning Sustainability, particularly on the elements of that Transportation System Plan that are, that are part of the comprehensive plan. And we'll talk about the delineation of those things a little bit today. But at its core, the transportation system is essential to the functioning of the city and the well-being and prosperity of the community. Transportation connects people and business to goods and services and links them to the regional, the region, state, the country, and the world. And although we often think about transportation as measured by mobility, it also creates access to opportunity. The city we build has an impact on our mobility and by extension, our access to opportunities throughout our community. It's being able to reach childcare, reach the way you get to your healthcare, to your school and higher education, to economic opportunity, civic engagement, recreation, and more. And this impacts our opportunities in life in a truly fundamental way. And we see transportation and land use as truly integrated in the way we build a great city. And we see that as your role is helping us to support that and helping us know when, when we've built a great city. So we're really happy to be here today to talk with you more about this. I'm here really, as all great managers, to help answer questions if they get too sticky and hard, but the really smart people are sitting here to my right and will walk you through the training. But we are here to start a conversation that we expect to continue with you throughout your duration of your responsibilities, planning commissioners.
Okay, and I want to try to help make things fun. So we'll see how I do with that today. What is the TSP? We'll go over some transportation philosophy, I'm calling that. We'll touch on projects, programs, and classifications. And then I'll hand that over to Eric, who will bring you through some policy highlights and talk about updating the TSP. We'll hear your questions and have a good time together. So what is the TSP? What's it made of? The Transportation System Plan, or TSP, is our 20-year plan to guide the transportation investments in Portland. It meets state and regional planning requirements and assesses local transportation needs. In it, you'll find a selection of relevant comp plan policies, especially all of them from Chapter Nine, though it's important to also note that all comp plan policies do guide us. We just house a selection of the comp plan policies that pertain pretty specifically to transportation in the TSP for convenience. But the TSP also has additional policies that build from the comp plan policies. So the comp plan, Chapter Nine, is the TSP, and the TSP is also a little more. More on that in a moment. Together, the TSP includes goals and policies that guide the maintenance, development, and prioritization and implementation of Portland's transportation system. A list, it also includes a list of projects and citywide programs, along with the financial plan, that would accommodate 20 years of population and employment growth, as well as master street plans and strategies and regulations for implementation, including street classification maps. So I know that's a lot, but I do break it down a little bit. These are the goals and policies in Comp Plan, Chapter Nine. The goals and policies in the Comp Plan, Chapter Nine, convey the city's intent to do these things. Create a coordinated, efficient, and more affordable multimodal transportation system. Make cost-effective investments and system management decisions that encourage people to choose healthy, active, and low-carbon transportation modes and systems, and enhance the economic competitiveness of the region. Reduce service disparities and achieve equitable access to all types of facilities and transportation modes. Ensure safety for users of all transportation modes with attention to the most vulnerable users, including people with disabilities, those using mobility devices, the young and old. Guide, it also guide the location and design of new street, pedestrian, bicycle, and trail infrastructure. Direct how and when transportation infrastructure is managed and maintained, and provide policy guidance for developing and implementing the Transportation System Plan. Okay, I just read everything on a slide and it was like a whole bunch of stuff on the slide. I don't like doing that, I like having nice pictures for you to, but we want you to also remember these things, so you can refer back. Here's another way to think of the TSP, is that it's part of the comp plan and part Public Facilities Plan. So some of the TSP includes comp plan elements, including the goals and policies, list of significant projects, transportation policies, street classifications and master street plans. In fact, the bread and butter of the TSP is Chapter Nine of the comp plan reprinted with a TSP cover on it. The TSP also serves as the transportation element of the Public Facilities Plan, which is part of the Citywide Systems Plan, which is a supporting document adopted with the comp plan. Goal 12 of the statewide planning goals is transportation, and it's what requires us to have a Transportation System Plan. The Transportation Planning Rules implement Goal 12 by specifying what it has to, what has to be included in our Transportation System Plan. In our jurisdiction, we additionally have Metro, who does planning with our region in mind, so our city transportation system plan additionally needs to be consistent with our regional transportation plan. Our region has an urban growth boundary to protect farm and forest land, as required by the state. So our city has to grow up instead of out in our comp plan, and our TSP essentially guide how we're going to do that and move more people in the same amount of space over time, safely, equitably, and efficiently, and sustainably. The TSP is informed by all the other plans we do over time since the previous update, like our modal plans, like our bicycle plan for 2030, Pet PDX, 2040 Freight, our neighborhood or area plans, like our in-motions, like our Northwest in Motion, or North Portland in Motion, and other plans and policies we have. It's through these efforts that projects and policies are identified to meet specific needs and with robust community engagement, safety, equity, and carbon emission reduction emphasis. And these plans also can produce recommendations for street classification changes and help shape future policy updates in the TSP. As I mentioned, the TSP serves as the transportation element of the Citywide Systems Plan, which includes the TSP's financial plan, also housed in the TSP. The Citywide Systems Plan includes the requirements of state mandated Public Facilities Plan, which connects back to the Oregon statewide planning goal 11, public facilities. So some of the TSP is in the comp plan, and some of the TSP is more detailed than the comp plan, because it includes subpolicies and area-specific policies, for example. Comp plan elements of the TSP include the goals and policies, the projects included in the list of significant projects, our TSP calls it our major projects list, street classification maps, and street plan maps. And the TSP also provides more detail than the comprehensive plan by including additional subpolicies and area-specific policies to support comp plan implementation. Additional supporting information about transportation system conditions and that financial plan, I was saying. Okay, so because you're a legislative body with purview over the comp plan, PBOT is required to bring our plans to you if they have, if they're a TSP update, or it will directly update any of the comp plan elements of the TSP, including goals and policies, the major projects list, which updates the list of significant projects in the comp plan, street classifications, or master street plan maps, also street vacations, that's when we give up right away for something, and street renaming. So either a TSP update or any plan that has any of these elements in it need to come to you. We do a lot of planning, we're always looking into particular areas of the city, like North Portland in Motion, which is a planning process happening right now. And we're looking at how to improve corridors with specific challenges, like with our Columbia-Lombard Mobility Corridor Plan. And we look deeply into our specific modes through plans like 2040 Freight, which you saw. Even though freight isn't a mode, it's a system. Each plan is like adding some of the ingredients to a bowl for making chocolate chip cookies. Technically, if we're hungry, we could mix what we've got and bake it in the oven, just like we could take each individual plan through the full legislative process. But it's a lot less work overall if we wait until we have more dough put together before we pop that in the oven. The final product is going to be a little more delicious, or at least a little more comprehensive. Maybe the chocolate chips aren't all concentrated in one area of the city, but needs in the transportation system as a whole are able to be considered and addressed more holistically. So we try to at least do a technical update of the TSP every two to four years, where we consider bringing in the combined classification changes and projects, et cetera, that have been adopted by city council in plans since the last TSP update took place. And we look at them with fresh and, we look at them fresh and contextually altogether, and they go through the legislative process together. So here's some examples of adopted plans since our last TSP update. All of these might have elements we'd consider for integration into a future TSP update, even if some of the strategies conform subpolicies. Not all of them include updates to comp plan elements of the TSP, like the projects list or classifications of. Now, because we typically batch, that might mean that some of the plan's recommendations won't be enforceable on developers until the plan's recommendations go through a full legislative process in a TSP update. It also means that these recommendations in adopted plans could change at different points in the legislative process. And overall, the benefits of staff time, efficiency, and holistic transportation system consideration often outweigh the potential risks, especially when we have the legal obligation to update our financial plan when we're making many project changes, and that takes a lot of time and effort. So modal plans, like our bicycle, pedestrian, and freight plans, even though freight is not a mode, it's a system, are not adopted with the comp plan, but I can tell you how they work to both implement an existing TSP as they also serve to help inform updates to the TSP. Our TSP shows us how we need to develop our modal and area plans to implement our transportation system goals. But our modal and area plans both implement those policies and also inform future considerations that may change them. But they themselves are not the change. Starting on the left here, when we update the TSP, we look at all the recommended updates we have for our projects, programs, more on programs later in the presentation, and classifications, and we consider these in context to what's existing and what other updates are being suggested from other plans, especially where those suggested updates might need us to consider trade-offs, where we have limited roadway space and sometimes competing priorities, like major freight street on a major city bikeway. Now, looking at the middle column for modal and other plans, when we do modal plans and other area plans, they might contain context or mode-specific goals for the area or mode. They might include prioritized implementation strategies and actions based on those goals. And they might include small capital projects for prioritized implementation in existing programs already in the TSP. Any prioritized policies, large projects, proposals for new or changed TSP programs or classifications become recommendations for consideration in a TSP update, because those are all comp plan elements. We don't just ship those recommendations straight through the legislative process from a modal plan to the TSP, because the TSP is how we reconcile across modal plans and other plans that recommend changes. It's a quality control step to make sure we're thinking holistically for managing the transportation system, especially for those trade-offs I mentioned. And a big important part of this is when we have to make sure our financial plan pencils out, which is a lot of work. out, which is a lot of work, requires comparing projects with one another on different criteria and it's something we have to do every time we're doing a major TSP update. More on that in a little bit here too. So then we're back to a TSP update again. And between the updates, our plans both implemented the TSP and helped show us how to consider refining it. So we take everything we learned and we see where we have any technical issues and we do more engagement to help inform choices about trade offs. And if it's a major TSP update, we do a deep dive on updating our project prioritization criteria, financial planning, and we refine the whole major projects and programs list. Okay, now bringing this back to you, the planning commission, there are two different ways PBOT could engage with you. The first is when we have plans that instigate the legislative requirement. For the legislative requirement, you'll host a legislative hearing and we'll notice the public 30 days in advance in all the ways that we do that. You'll be able to introduce amendments if you see fit and you'll make a vote that will send your recommended version to, of the plan to city council. The second way our PBOT plans could engage with you at planning commission is when we bring them for your advice in a briefing and that's because their adoption by city council doesn't update the TSP, there's no legislative role or action for the planning commission. Sounds like a slight interruption. Okay. Let me tell you a little bit what this actually looks like. For plans that go through the legislative process, this includes five iterations of a plan, of a draft plan. So each will show map changes and or underline and strike through text for what is explicitly being considered for addition or removal from what is already adopted in TSP language. Starting with the pre legislative pieces, staff engage with our internal and external stakeholders, technical experts and the public to assemble initial changes. We also engage with the comp plan, community involvement committee. Then we put out an in-house draft to staff, agency partners and probably advisory bodies for the work and get a first wave of feedback on map changes, like for street classifications and text additions and or subtractions. We make revisions to the draft accordingly and put it out for full public review. We work hard to engage Portlanders, especially those who could be potentially impacted. And in, we engage them in taking a deep look and providing feedback for improvements we can make to what we put out in that draft. We report on what we heard and who we heard from and what we changed as a result. And we deliver to you, the planning commission, a proposed draft for a 30 day legally noticed public hearing. You, planning commission, listen to the staff and testimony and ultimately vote on the proposal, the draft of changes with underlines and strike throughs with or without amendments. The resulting product of your vote becomes the version of the plan we assemble as the recommended draft that we then bring to city council. City council has their own hearing on the, on the version of the plan recommended by you and they vote on the plan with or without amendments and that resulting document becomes the adopted plan that we submit to the Department of Land Conservation and Development. Okay, a little philosophy now and then I get to hand over the mic. The comp plan's land use model of centers and corridors, consistent with the 2040 regional growth concept, helps us plan for housing growth in a sustainable way in that it can help reduce demand for drive alone trips. It's also kind of like applying the urban growth boundary concept of growing up instead of out within our city, instead of just the perimeter of our city. But instead of protecting farm and forest land, it's preserving industrial job generation, land supply and natural areas, for example. And it also helps make it so that people can better meet their daily needs without having to travel too far, meaning it's more possible to concentrate our investments to more safely support people to be able to walk, bike and get to and from transit. But even still, more people in their cars are going to be moving here and trying to fit into a space that isn't getting any bigger. So what's the solution? Move more people in the same amount of space. Cars take up a certain amount of room, a certain amount of space, even though data shows they're only moving one person 60% of the time. Buses easily hold up to 40 people and take much less space than if all their passengers were driving in cars. People can get where they need to go by bicycling or walking. If they do that, it frees up more space in the vehicle lanes too. And this way, there's more room on the roads for people who need to drive and for freight movement to keep our economy humming. Plus it's better for our air quality and for showing the effects, slowing the effects of climate change, things that are also important in the comp plan. Because of how we've built and managed the city and region over time, driving is still the fastest, easiest, most convenient way to get most places in Portland and around the region, even with all the growth we've had over the last 10 years. So I like to quote Bachman Turner, overdrive and say, you ain't seen nothing yet because if you've been here for a while and noticed changes, what we're expecting with the growth is bigger than what you've seen so far. So this is an example street, it has 12 cars filling the road. 40% of the 12 cars would have more than one person, so we'll say there's 16 people taking up all this space. These 16 people could easily fit on a bus, which holds up to 40 people at a time. Now there's room to move more people in this space. Now we've moved folks from the cars to, to the bike lane and we can fit 12 people in it, freeing up more room to be able to simultaneously move more people. And here we have 12 people walking and sidewalks like these could comfortably fit more. So this is how we can design a transportation system that moves more people in the same amount of space, providing transportation options, making it safer, more convenient for people to walk, bike and get to and from the bus. Our TSP helps us use the right tool for the job, getting more people where they need to go in the same amount of space we already have. This means for longer trips, the most efficient tool for moving more people in the same amount of space is transit. We're focused on making bus and rail travel faster, more economical, more convenient and more reliable and our policies say that. For trips that are three miles or less, bikes can move a lot of people without taking up very much space. So we're creating an all ages and abilities network that makes cycling safer and more accessible, whether you're eight years old or 80 or beyond those ages probably. And for trips that are a mile or less to enjoy places in your neighborhood or to catch a bus will make walking easier and safer. And of course, if the places you want to go are closer, it makes it easier to walk. So land use is really important here. The centers and corridors framework helps make more vibrant communities where services, food and jobs are nearby so close you don't even have to get in your car. If we use the space we have more efficiently and we get more room on our roads and we get more people where they want to go, so everybody wins. And with that, I am very happy to get to hand over the talking duties to Eric.
Great, thank you so much, Francesca. And so after having grounded you all in some of that, the legalese and some of those other pieces, we'll, we'll get a little bit more into some of the other details to hopefully kind of maybe stick some, some, some things around that skeleton a little bit more that I'll, that'll ground you. So for example, our TSP major project list is one of the, the two important components that we've highlighted here as well, along with the, the financial plan. And, and all of our planning work over time ultimately identifies projects, as we noted, programs, which we'll get into in a little bit, that fills our needs in the transportation system. And to develop our major project lists, the universe of potential projects that were identified from our planning over time is then evaluated against these, against various criteria that reflect our values and, and our goals. So these, the projects rose to the top were prioritized as part of our, what you'll be here as referred to as our constrained projects list, so financially constrained relative to what we can anticipate reasonably to be available revenue wise over the, the 20 years or so of that planning horizon that, that we plan for. So the TSP also has a category of projects for what's called the unconstrained list, which is based on a much more optimistic revenue outlook, but it also lets us identify and prepare for additional priorities that as financial situations change or for the next update, which are other priorities that the community has identified that we can then figure out how we might be able to fit them in. So the major projects in the TSP typically are considered, quote, major because they cost more than $500,000 each. However, many smaller individual projects are also identified in our plans over time. And for those smaller projects that typically cost less than that, we identified 10 different programs that draw primarily from those, those plans and strategies and that are updated over, over time as new plans and strategies are adopted. So that's a mechanism by which we can sort of continually to program against those, those types of ideas, which you can see here. And, and that lets us sort of continue, for example, to use our vision zero evaluation tools as we, over time are recognizing where high crash rates are occurring and then can have more nimble, specific focus on those challenges rather than say, oh, for the next five years, this is where we think the problem will be, right? That's a, that's a more difficult piece. So this lets us be adaptive and nimble over time through these programs. So a few of them, so there's, there's 10 over here that you can see overall that are currently outlined in the TSP. And overall, and I didn't give you a little context, which I should have just beforehand on the previous slide. So for example, our current financially constrained list for the 2035 TSP contains about $1.4 billion of, of proposed investment. And then there's another $2 billion or so that's in that unconstrained list that we identified. And as I'll note a little bit later, there's a little more rigor around that than there has been in the past. We've done this sort of voluntarily, but it's becoming a, a state requirement. So I'll address that in a little. By contrast, that these programs have about $300 million programmed against them across that. So it gives you a little bit sense of scale, but again, significant investments that flow through these, through these programs as well. So for example, in, a lot of these come out through our, our modal plans, our pedestrian master plan, excuse me, modal plan, PED PDX, the, the city, citywide pedestrian plan, didn't actually identify large capital projects at all, but really recognized that, that building out our pedestrian networks through completion and focusing on safety, that this is really a useful way to identify where safe crossings and sidewalks need to be and then be building those out over time through the, through these programs. We often sometimes call these program buckets because they also represent little different buckets of money, of, of money, which we can actually combine and, and implement across different, so you can draw on multiple of these programs, right? It's not to say each of them has only their own list, but as we're going in and making complete streets, improvements in various areas, you can draw upon each of these sort of eligible expenses in order to, to do that creatively and cost effectively. Ooh, sure, this one's.
Okay, all right, I get to do the ice cream one.
You get to do dessert.
Yeah. So we're required to plan, develop, implement and manage the transportation system in accordance with street design and street policy classifications. These are two different sets of classifications. Every street gets one of the street design classifications. It's like picking your type of cup or cone if there were seven different options of cups and cones to choose from. So street design classifications assign each street a type based on a combination of the transportation function and the adjacent land use context. So there's civic main street, civic corridor, neighborhood mains, main street, neighborhood corridor, local street, industrial road, regional corridor, those are all different types of cones or cups you could have. Building on that, we have a street policy classification that describes how streets should function for each mode of travel, not necessarily how they're functioning at present. So the street policies are like the ice cream here. Often there are multiple classifications for one street, so you could have up to six different scoops of ice cream on your cone. And each of these street policy classifications have their own range of different flavors. So if the bicycle classifications were vanilla, there'd be major city bikeways, city bikeways, local service bikeways and bicycle district streets. So like everything from French vanilla to like organic vanilla bean custard. And you end up getting very hungry quickly.
Thanks, Francesca.
Oh, yeah, I was going to also do an interactive TSP demo. I don't think I'm going to do it at this moment, however, you can go to our TSP webpage. You just can Google search or go to Portland.gov and write TSP and you'll find our webpage here. We have an interactive version where you can both browse the streets and look up the classifications of your street, you can look up where the projects actually are on a map and you can also read the text of the plan. So you can read about the classifications and all the different things in here.
Great. And maybe one last on the previous ice cream slide, addition to the delicious analogy. One other way you might think about how those come together is that those, the cone, the street design types are kind of reflective of our land use and the land use intense there, right? They're functioning differently around that. And then within that, there's also different functional roles that the street plays, right? Is this trying to be a much higher profile street for trucking? You know, it's generally going to be wider, for example, other things like that. Is it going to accommodate those things? So that's how we sort of bring together our classification networks and then array them against our land uses. So I just thought that might be another way of thinking about that effectively. And then, yeah, I'll get into a few more highlights here. And yeah, I guess that's why you've been going out and clicking down because the page down is not working, which is interesting. Great. So as we sort of think about what we're trying to accomplish here, as we described, how do some of the policies actually sort of fit together to try to, to shape those decisions and, and drive toward that? And how do we measure our success are somewhat we'd like to highlight here as well. So, you know, one key way we, we think about this, as we, we talked about building on that, that philosophy of, of moving more people in more space and less space or the same amount of space as we grow, you know, and we noted the different sort of modal efficiencies is how they occupy space. You then see this translated into policy 9.49 that, that talks about a, a daily non-mode share, excuse me, non-driving mode share goal. And you can see that that is effectively established toward a 70% non-SOV, single occupant vehicle is what that's referring to there piece. So it's not to say we're looking for no one to be in their vehicles, but we think in order to accommodate the level of growth, that that 20-year population employment growth projections are going to do and, and maintain mobility and, and flow and access through the city, those are about the right, the balance that we're looking to attain. So, you know, and we know that, for example, because of those growth projections. And if the new people here continue to travel proportionally to the way we travel now, we will, you ain't seen nothing yet, as Bachman Turner reminded us, in terms of congestion growing over time. And so fundamentally, that means that we need to be reducing the amount of, of that proportionality of, of drive alone trips occurring. And so as I noted, there's a specific target, actually of no net new drive alone trips by 2035 is how the, the policy is articulated. And then it's accompanied with this mode share array. And we have some data that we're looking at, we certainly track this over time, partially through the, the census, tracks this for commute trips is one readily available set of data. We are also looking at some other new information, actually, Google is making available some information based on some, some of basically a smart stone scrapes, but sort of doing very high level, not personally tracked information that says, oh, here's also what's, what's likely happening and how fast you're moving might give you a sense of whether you're on a bike or a car, for example. So that's some new data we might have that gives us a little bit richer sense of that. But overall, as of, for example, 2021, we were seeing that, and we'll compare that with what's on the screen here in a second, but that we were at about 34% non-SOV mode share, so only about halfway toward that, that goal. And we recognize that that timing certainly is probably affected by the pandemic and some of the, the travel behavior there. But as you can tell, in our 2015 commute mode share there, we were at about 43%. And so not really going in the right direction there and clearly more work to be done. So wanting to, to acknowledge that. Another key policy that, that helps us think through this is, well, a policy 9.6, our transportation strategy for people movement. And I think you heard at the 2040 freight presentation, an analogy to this for the freight system. So here we really recognize, again, based on that, that philosophy and recognition of the sort of spatial efficiency, but also importantly, vulnerability of users and how do we design in order to make all folks comfortable in, in those spaces? This is a, a, a pretty important piece that we use in designing our corridors and our specific projects as well. It really helps to think through some of those, those trade offs and, and other decisions. And we've also just been. And we've also just been developing a tool called Streets PDX, which really helps us continue on the implementation end of things and thinking through this. And we could offer a briefing on that. It basically starts to bring all of our classifications and rights of way together. So you can really look at the city in terms of how the policies overlay with the physical realm, and then it can really highlight where some of those most difficult trade-offs occur. And then it has sort of a number of design options that people, that our project managers can apply and really drives through from that policy through that intent. So maybe a little bit of interest there, so we can talk about staff around when might be appropriate to bring that back if folks are interested. So as we're planning for growth, you know, it's really important that we have those mode shares. And in order to do that, we need to create spaces that really reflect and make efficient and attractive these different modes. You know, for example, in addition to vulnerability I mentioned, we also know that the people living on lower incomes also tend to make more trips by biking, walking, and transit than those with higher incomes in our region. And so this is also advancing equitable access and mobility at the same time. So the other piece that this recognizes, that widening streets and expanding those roadways can be really quite expensive and also can have negative impacts on development and adjoining businesses and community activities. And so again, really wanting to focus in on how to manage and use more efficiently that existing space. So for all of those reasons, we have effectively prioritized along this inverted triangle that you see here reflecting all of that. And I want to, you know, recognize that while these are in an order, the policy itself also expands beyond that a little bit, that recognizes that those classifications we referred to earlier can indicate that in certain instances, for example, if it's a very low walking priority in terms of that classification system, a very high freight priority, that might mean in that instance, you're still going to be designing for freight movement more so than walking movement. So it doesn't say in every space at all time, you start with walking and then you work through this list. So I wanted to clarify that. And in addition, a couple of other things to note here, this also tries to look ahead, both from the existing modes that work today, but thinking toward the future. For example, automated vehicles are noted here. And so trying to engage with some of those issues, recognizing that while they can have some efficiency benefits, and therefore is, for example, when they're multiple passenger, higher that than lower no occupancy vehicles, right? So we really are seeing that the system that some describe, that we have basically robo-taxis lots of places where people can use almost micro-transit instances, that might be a higher or more efficient use of those spaces than if suddenly we're having personal vehicles that are automated going back and forth from your house to pick you up, but otherwise driving around the city, for example. So we'll see if that future rarely ever comes to pass, because it's always been about two years away. But we're ready and have a vision for how we would want to see that occur. So let me keep moving there, I think. Yeah. So another key area, as we're trying to think about how we encourage those mode shifts and reducing vehicle miles traveled in the city, is what's called transportation demand management. And so this really is that suite of kind of information, encouragement, incentives, things like that, that help people realize what their options are and realize the benefits of those, and in some cases, removing barriers toward using that, either informational, financial, other barriers that people experience as they navigate the system. You know, and overall, research and industry best practice have really indicated that providing residents and employees with that information and incentive can really help, you know, shift folks away from what might be the most obvious or most, you know, initially comfortable, that they're familiar with, pattern of getting around and really help them discover things that might work better for them. And, you know, so this is a key area of focus. We're pleased that we see, for example, some proposals in our Portland Clean Energy Fund Transportation Investment Plan to support our transportation wallet. This is an example taken from our Transportation Wallet Access for All program, which is really focused on lower-income residents, those living on lower incomes, and helping to remove barriers of, here particularly, financial barriers, that this really is a suite of services that folks can tap into to help reduce those costs and improve equitable access to services being offered in town. So that's another key strategy. And then, you know, we talked a lot about our space, but we also recognize, as I'm sure you do, that our streets occupy quite a lot of our public realm here in the city. And so how do we think about them, not just for movement, but for experience and community building, I think is another key suite of policies that occur. And so, you know, some people may not realize that that work isn't, quote, "extra." You know, it's not just a fun thing on the side, it's actually a key management and use of our system that we need to be thinking through and how that interacts with vehicular and other movement. And it really is a key part of our comp plan goals. So, which, you know, integrate both place-making and transportation functions in the design and management, as we noted. So this is Comp Plan Policy 9.14 that really does identify and asks us to enhance opportunities for having these places serve for community interaction, environmental function, for example, open space, tree canopy, recreation, and other important community purposes. So they also do encourage repurposing street segments that aren't critical for transportation connectivity to other community purposes. So as you get into more neighborhoods, you can have more flexible uses of some of those spaces that meet those community needs. That's Comp Plan Policy 9.15, for example. And then finally, Policy 9.16 really makes sure we're designing with nature by promoting street and trail alignments and designs that respond to topography and natural features where feasible, and then protect streams, wildlife habitat, and native trees as well. Parking management, another important topic and one that always gets folks engaged usually. So, you know, this really tells us, we have a suite of policies there that really try to describe how and why we should be managing parking, both to be reducing demand overall for private vehicle ownership and managing supply of what is a limited resource that people do want to access in our space, and recognize that it supports economic development and prosperity, access to employment, and other important personal and community needs. And so our policies help us think through those trade-offs and balancing acts to accomplish that suite of goals there. Because we also recognize that while it is a really valuable public asset, it also comes with a lot of cost, both in terms of how much space it can occupy on our street and what that means for other activities that can occur there. And then particularly, as we get into development space and some of the off-street parking supply, I think you all are probably well aware of the cost there in the tens of thousands of dollars, $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 per stall, that can obviously add a lot of cost to development patterns overall. And so we're able to create transportation systems supportive of land uses that don't require quite as much of that space being and cost being ascribed to that than we may have other opportunities in terms of those limited resources. A few other just notes there, I think, recognizing that the curb zone itself is also a really important asset and the transactions that occur there, how we really use, for example, performance-based parking, as council asked us to adopt in 2018, where we really are managing the levels of demand and then adjusting the price over time is a way in which you can, if you will, apply market principles to that limited resource in a way that we think helps to manage that effectively and let people assess for themselves the value that they're getting from that use and prioritize it that way. And those are things, for example, that can also be reinvested in more options. The transportation wallet I mentioned previously has been supported in our parking districts for a number of years through parking revenues. And so that's a way that people say, well, you can park or hear another other options. Maybe that lets you get rid of that second or third vehicle in your household, and therefore you can use the space differently yourself. So I think we'll pause there. We can talk about parking for hours if we'd wanted to, but. And then new mobility, I mentioned a little bit earlier in the triangle graphic, some of those considerations. But overall, we've got a suite of new mobility policies that really try to reinforce and make sure that these support the vision we've had for everything else as well, that fundamentally the services that have the lowest climate and congestion impacts and the greatest equity benefits are what we're wanting to see, engage with, and promote. And so, for example, things like Bike Town for All, where we've really been able to work with our partners there to offer free or low-cost access to those electric bike services across the city and to expand out into North Portland and East Portland and Southwest Portland more so than we have in the past, is, I think, a good example of how our policies say, this is what we want you to go do, we can then go and work with partners to implement that, for example. And we're very proud to have actually the largest bike share space in the country. It's serving the largest area of any country, any city in the country right now, which is great. So I think that's probably a number of the key element to evaluate there. Maybe one other, just a quick example. For example, as we were launching the pilot and now are hoping to launch the permanent program through an RFP for the e-scooters, you know, some important questions arose around, hey, great, these are electric, but, you know, they're getting picked up and they're getting moved around, and, you know, these things look like they get kind of junked pretty quickly. Like, what is the actual greenhouse gas and climate benefit profile of this? And so we were actually able to do some research and analysis. Actually, our permit for the pilot required a lifecycle analysis so that the companies would evaluate and estimate across sort of the manufacturer, use, and disposal of those, which was the first requirement in the country along those lines. And we've had representatives of those companies note to council and others that they actually benefited, their businesses benefited, they've implemented changes out of those, and that overall, the industry has become more efficient as a result. But it let us better evaluate and answer the question. And we saw that even despite all of that, we were seeing, based on survey information from riders and others, that the trips that were being replaced were more efficient. So people were moving from driving and other things more so than they were, excuse me, walking and biking, for example. And so there was a net benefit there. And so that type of evaluation lets us understand whether we're implementing those policies and how we make changes, for example. And that also let us inform new things we wanted to see for this RFP, for example, encouraging them to charge on-site rather than driving a van around or having an electric van if you're going to go pick that up so you don't have sort of hidden emissions from the system. So just a little deep dive there in terms of some of the ways in which the high-level policy gets implemented on the ground. Thanks. Now, of course, it's important, you know, I was just describing some of the work the bureaucrats were doing there, but most importantly, we work and serve our community. And so how we make sure that the policies, the goals, the vision, and then the implementation thereof is implemented is really grounded in these community involvement goals and policies, which are themselves all embedded in Chapter Two of the comp plan. And this really is how we do and follow our work. And we're quite proud of it, actually. I know Francesca here to my left has been a part of a team. For example, PED-PDX was honored actually with an international award, top project in the world for public involvement around that, particularly around walking while black, and the recognition that that was a conversation we needed to dive more deeply into than we had previously. And so those are the types of ways in which we really start to understand, you know, especially if we want to have equitable access and use of these systems, for us to learn that people weren't feeling physically safe out there, regardless of what we built, that it wasn't about that necessarily, was important learning for us to be able to then serve our community better. So this is a key part of the work, of course, and part of what you hear through your testimony as well. So a little bit more of how we kind of work with the materials here to do the work, and then looking ahead. And we look forward to working with you on this, because we are in early stages of preparing to do the next update of this transportation system plan. So just a quick step back before we look ahead. So as you can see here, we've sort of done a series of updates over the last 20 or so years, with 2002 being the first TSP that was adopted. And then in 2007 and '11, we made some minor updates, updating some master street plans, and, for example, responding to the Portland-Milwaukee Light Rail land use final order, things like that. But as noted a bit previously, but as a reminder, a, quote, "major" update is when we are going to be moving that horizon year, that 20-year horizon year out, and then recalibrating based on updated growth management assumptions from that time, working with Metro and others around that, also updating our goals and policies, refreshing those criteria for how we prioritize projects, rerunning that evaluation, and then really updating our financial plan, as I noted, now needing to do a much more rigorous version of that under some new state rules, which I'll mention a little bit more about in a second. So right now, we've actually only done one of these major updates in the past in a few different stages as part of the last comprehensive plan periodic review. So parts were adopted in 2016 and 2018 as part of that comp plan update. And then in March 2020, we also did a smaller, minor technical update, primarily bringing in pedestrian classifications recommended through the PED-PDX modal plan, and also then came through the Planning Sustainability Commission at the time to bring that recommendation to council. So that's a little bit of the history. And then looking ahead, 2045 will be the next planning horizon we're working toward. That's also what the Metro Regional Transportation Plan is working toward. And that's, as you may be aware, actually getting updated this year, the 2023 RTP update is something that we're currently working on as a team as well, and are really looking at the next major update beginning in 2025, is what we're looking at here. And in part, that both reflects our intention to actually improve upon, if you will, that cycle earlier, so that we are able to bring in all those plans that were batched in that delicious-looking set of cookies in more readily, so that we can get to the implementation of those new policies and projects sooner. As Francesca noted earlier, some things don't take legal effect until they actually come into the TSP, and so we want to be able to do that relatively rapidly without sort of always being in an update process, because that's also not very efficient and doesn't let us get that holistic view. The other key piece that's going on right now that you may be aware of that we wanted to highlight is that, in fact, those rules, the transportation planning rules from the state have just been updated within the last year under what was called the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking, or CEFEC, is an acronym that the Department of Land Conservation and Development's been using for that. And while they adopted those, some of those rules last year and then updated some of those rules in April, they have actually just re-initiated another rulemaking to work through some residual issues. A few other cities around the state have had some concerns about some of those rules, as some people may be tracking. And so this is an opportunity to continue to clarify and make adjustments to some of those. So we'll remain engaged there. But overall, because there have been a number of changes in that effort, and encouragingly, they are moving very similarly in directions that we're already attempting to do, really centering vehicle miles traveled reduction per capita as a key indicator. And in fact, our next transportation system plan cannot, in the horizon year, demonstrate any growth in VMT per capita. And so that's going to be an important new rule that we'll have to be using and really working toward. And for the Metro RTP, it in fact requires a 30% reduction in that for the region over that same period. So that is something they're still working to demonstrate in this RTP. But that's the kind of thing that can really help move the needle, if you will, right? If our plans have to demonstrate how we're going to do that, that's strong encouragement to do so. So what I wanted to note there as well is that there are a number of new technical approaches, and some of the ways that we evaluate projects are actually also defined. We have some flexibility, but there's some new tools, new guidance that the state is working on, both Department of Land Conservation and Development, but also in partnership with ODOT. And so we are actually working to contract with ODOT as part of this next update for technical assistance and support in that area. And so that's part of the process that's unfolding, even as literally right now, this year, they are developing that guidance. And so part of this is, when do they have the capacity to actually work with each of the major cities in the metro areas across the state? And they've kind of got a whole calendar where we've been able to slot in. And our eagerness to move faster moved us from 2027, their original proposal, to 2025. So we are getting to the front of the line here in order to do this work. But that will be an important set of new rules to be implementing this under. And so we're all learning together in many ways, and if folks are interested, could come back and highlight some more of the changes that are occurring under those rules. So almost at the end here, and then we can open it up some more. So thank you for your attention. So, you know, trying to bring it all together, I think, and looking ahead, so some of the key themes we'll know we'll be grappling with, you know, we recognize that these have been and continue to be challenging times for our city and for our community members, but also with a lot of opportunity. And so we really want to be very thoughtful about how we work through the next TSP update, so we can make changes that are responsive, meaningful, and impactful to those challenges and opportunities. So a few of the emerging themes that we've already been hearing from community and know we'll continue to hear, transportation justice, which is an organizing principle in our strategic plan, and I think already grounded clearly in the TSP, but could do so even more, because we recognize, and we've done actually a lot of work to document both some of the historical contributions that decisions have made, as well as current disparities in how people are experiencing benefits and burdens on our system. And to, you know, recognize that we really have an historic and a current transportation system that is inequitable, and that we have harms from past decisions to remedy and address, and we have to do that working with community and understanding how best to do that. So those are a key suite of conversations we want to have, sharing that information, our own learnings, and then really understanding humbly what it is we need to be doing differently to remedy that. Yeah, I think I'll note there. Climate change, we are also aware that 40% of emissions, the highest source of any sector in our city and in our state frankly, is transportation in terms of those GHI emissions. And so we need to really focus on how we reduce that, but do so again through a climate justice and transportation justice lens, recognizing that there are benefits and burdens for how we do that, again, drawing on those various programs we highlighted earlier to improve equitable access and mobility while we're making affordability and safety key outcomes as well. Equitable access, I've noted a few different times, is really important, and that means both building out systems throughout the city so that modal options And that means both building out systems throughout the city so that, that modal options exist, not just in wealthier neighborhoods that have been developed longer, but really are, we're transforming the city in, in line with the vision that those plans across the city, working with community have developed. And then how do we ensure that the, the suite of, of cost and language and information and personal comfort barriers are minimized as well? So that people really can experience and enjoy those, those assets as they're developed. So, oh, I skipped a couple of others there on the right, my apologies. Resilience is also a key theme here, both climate resilience and a lot of the important work that the Clean Energy Fund is, is addressing, you know, things like tree canopy and urban heat island and those types of things that we've talked about. But also seismic resilience is important in this region. And we do have a number of bridges and other, other assets that are needing that. We've been successful recently in getting some federal support to do that. And we look forward to continuing to do so, but continue to really work with, with Metro and state partners as they update our, our mapping and understanding of our emergency routes, for example, is a key piece here. And how we ensure that either new, new facilities are better able to, to address seismic and climate resilience. And all that's part of our asset management need and focus as well. And that'll be an interesting conversation because I, I will acknowledge that the state's focus in, in transportation system plans has been primarily around growth management over time. But increasingly, asset management is a really important part of that. And, and I think they appreciate that, but that's an area where we'll continue to work with those state partners on, on developing that out, even as we work much more in coordinated fashion internally, particularly as a new sort of public works portfolio of service offerings in the city to really think through where we can be making those, those investments jointly and efficiently. Lots there. So that's why we have a whole team that does this.
We made it to the end, Derek.
We did. So yes, let's turn it over and engage with you all some more. Thank you so much.
Well, so we also want to say it's possible you never want to hear anything about more transportation. But if we also left you hungry for more, please feel free to reach out to us. That's especially for members of the public and you're watching this and you have questions. We really welcome you to send your questions to us and reach out to us for anything else that you'd like to follow up on.
Thank you so much for that comprehensive presentation. I will open it up to my colleagues on the commission for questions and comments.
I've got too many questions. What's our timeframe for Q and A? And all the people are going to speak too, and not just me, I hope.
We have one other agenda item and we go until 3:30. So I think we have a good 20 minutes.
I think we were allotting an hour and a half to this presentation, which I don't know how much time we have taken thus far exactly.
We have about 20 minutes left then.
Yeah. Because, you know, yes, that would be great. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for the great presentation. I've got, one question is, since I was on the commission back in 2018 when we did the last update. And I remember then hearing the aspirations from the 2007 plan and being clear that we hadn't actually made that much way towards those. Those were looking ahead to 2020 or something like, I'm not sure what it was, it was in the future of us. And it's like, where are we along the way? Well, maybe not that far. And then we were, so we're sort of at the midpoint, we were updating the plan. It wasn't quite clear how effective the things we've been doing for the past eight years had been. And I'm wondering what happens as we approach 2025? And let's just say all the things we've been doing the past 10 years, the mode split hasn't changed much. I would expect that if that were the case, that there would be much more aggressive policy, there would be something substantially different, wouldn't try to do the same thing, right? Because it didn't make a difference. So I guess maybe you already have a clue of what the answer to that's going to be. But my hope is that there is a chance to, I mean, I looked at the benchmarks from the 2018 plan and most of them are 2035, but one of them is 2025. It's mixed use households. The percentage of people with no vehicle and mixed use housing will go from 13% to 24% by 2025. By 2025, we'll know whether, whether it happened or not, right? If it didn't happen, then probably we have to get more housing built or something like that, right? But, um, so it's not just like a you, us team, it's a team thing. But I, I guess my concern is that we say, okay, we're this far along, we're going to do these things and we're going to leapfrog past. And in practice, those things we did last time, they actually didn't make us enough headway to make it there. Does that make any sense?
So much, absolutely. So there's a few things here. One, we want to look to better data, data that we can better understand how we've been doing with what our goals were. And we want to do an audit of what our policy said we would try to do, just like the one you mentioned. And, you know, look at how effective we're being and what would need to change and have authentic conversations with both the community and with technical wonks who can help us use data that we can find to make some smart decisions. So we can try to move the needle in the places that we're trying to move. It is really hard and we need to see how, how we've been doing, actually take a robust look at that and figure out how we can do better and what we need to do to move that needle. So that's really awesome. Yeah.
And I'll just maybe briefly weigh in. I appreciate Commissioner also your recognition that, that sort of, that transportation is part of a bigger set of systems, right? And how those, those work together. And I think that's a key piece, right? Clearly, there's been legislative activity on the zoning and the housing front that hopefully might really change things on the ground over time. But how we're understanding the efficacy of our, our, our projects and our programs and how they interact with those is really important. I think one other piece that we've come to recognize is that, that the building out the system, as we've described in various ways here, is, is of course necessary, but it may also be insufficient to the task, right? What are those suite of management tools that we need to manage from parking management, potentially to some of the other conversations going on in the region and the state around both funding, transportation infrastructure, but also how the system is managed through things like tolling or other pricing mechanisms. I think are what we've learned from our own research with ODOT and Metro are part of the, the conversation that is difficult, right? That, that's the thing is these, even if we have ambitious policy language, they still come down to political decisions that get implemented through various bodies, such as your own as well as council. And so how we continue to help educate, inform and, and help people connect dots between decisions that, that mean some of those system level outcomes is part of our work, but also part of the challenge of the work, I'll just, I'll be candid. But I think that's where it's important to have appropriately ambitious targets that get to what we think we need to do for either addressing the climate crisis, the equity crises that we, we know exist, you know, how we continue to measure that is, is important work. The frankly itself requires resourcing and that's part of our challenge as well. We're hopeful that some of the things that the state's doing will help improve some of those tools that we know whether those new rules they're doing are working. But how we, we better evaluate our own projects pre, post and how people are using those. And if we can learn more about design or things like that. So there's a whole suite of scales, sort of macro tools to micro tools they need to be using and then doing evaluation over time. So that all resonates quite a bit. Thank you.
I see that Commissioner Thompson, who's joined online, has her hand raised. So I'm going to invite Commissioner Thompson to go ahead and then we can circle back to you, Eli, if you still have some other questions and other commissioners. Go ahead, Erica.
Thank you, Francesca and Eric for that presentation. I have two questions, but I'll try to keep it pretty quick.
One, one moment, we're having a hard time hearing you. If you could speak up or maybe raise the volume on your end, Commissioner Thompson?
Sure. Yeah. Can you hear me okay?
It's a little better now.
It's a little better? Hmm. Okay. I'll just try to speak.
Oh, that's better.
That's better?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. I think that was something that happened outside of my control. But, um, so my first question and comment is just kind of a quick one. It's, uh, it goes to the transportation strategy diagram or pyramid. And I've seen several iterations of this idea that prioritizes walking and biking over other modes of transportation. And I was just curious if you've had feedback about broadening the term walking to include people who use assisted mobility devices. You talked about equitable access in the sense of distributing resources and investments geographically. But I think that there's also, it's really important to acknowledge that there are people that have different ways of mobilizing themselves, you know, and, and using the, the pedestrian scale infrastructure. And I think that it's important to, you know, consider doing that because there are different infrastructural requirements that come with people who are walking versus using a wheelchair or a scooter or something like that. And that also comes into play with some of the other transportation modes that you touched on, like scooters, which I've seen frequently like occupying the sidewalk, which is a little bit of a nuisance if you're a pedestrian and you like go around it or step over it. But if it's blocking the sidewalk for somebody that is a wheelchair user, then suddenly like that sidewalk, it may not be usable anymore. So that, I'm not sure if you have a response there, but that, that was just a, a quick comment.
Yeah, I think that, um, thank you very much. And I think what you're using is an equity lens, looking at these policies and looking at our transportation system plan. And that is the way that we're supposed to look at these. I just did a quick browse of the interactive TSP text to see where we might have language for that. You know, we do have a glossary in the TSP and it looks like we're missing a definition, a broad definition of walking, which PED PDX did develop. So thank you for pointing that in particular out. We can look to include an inclusive definition of walking, which is the true one that we, we do use. And then there's other ways that we can use an equity lens, like you mentioned, throughout our update of the TSP and the policies that we have, including the new mobility, as you touched on with scooters.
Great. Thank you. Yeah. And I, I think that, that having a definition of walking probably helps. But for people in the community that are just looking at like the high level, walking may, you know, the definition might still be a step too far or something to really like feel like connecting them. So, um, and then this is a little bit of a bigger question. And other people, other commissioners may have things to add or to build on this. But I feel pretty clear on the legislative process as it pertains to the planning commission. You had that slide that talked about like the six different, you know, drafts, the internal draft and then the proposed draft, et cetera. And where the planning commission plugs into that is clear. But it's a little bit less clear to me, the briefings and when those happen and some of the other extra legislative work that happens. And I guess my goal with all of this is just trying to establish better expectations for myself and for the group about how and when we hear from PBOT and how and when we engage from you on some of those briefings. And in addition, I also wanted to just point out that we've had some prior discussion about specific significant projects that are on the TSP and are included in the TSP, but may not have enough definition to really determine whether or not they comply with the comp plan or not when they're included in the comp plan, because it's just not feasible to develop a, a project plan to that level of granularity. And so what about those projects where they are really significant? They're included in a general way, but it's more in the implementation and the nuts and bolts that will actually determine whether or not they align to the comp plan or not. And, and what is the planning commission's role in something like that, for example?
Okay, maybe I'll take the first one and then Eric could take the second, or Patricia will take the second one. So the first one, when we have projects like 2040 Freight that have some recommendations in them for like classification, classifications or project updates that could be considered for a future, in a, a future transportation system plan legislative process, then we would like to offer to come and, and brief you on those plans. Because you might see elements of them as they come back around to your body. And we will say, uh, these recommendations initially came from this. This is what were, we considered as we looked at other plans that were also adopted. And here's what we're bringing to you. And you can say what you expect and see. And, um, you know, maybe you'll have that background in history piece here. But I do want to let Patricia carry.
Patricia Deefenover for the record. So I think we covered the, the scenarios in which topics would come to this commission as a briefing. And I think the explanations that Francesca gave about the modal plans and that interactive, I mean, in particular, that slide really resonated with me personally. I was hoping that it, it was helpful for you all. That shows how the TSP informs modal plans and then modal plans may reveal things that ultimately will require like a, a TSP update. So they inform each other and it's iterative and it's, it's a question of timing. And I, and we reckon, I think we all recognize, and we've had conversations with you as a commission and, and former commissioners, the former commission about the, the timing challenges associated with that process, that the length of time that it might take from, you know, a, a plan like the area plans or the modal plan that plans that Francesca was describing and when we actually go through a formal legislative process. I, I think that's just the nature of the process. And so I, I think we've identified the best process that we can for that. I think the question, Vice Chair Thompson, that you asked specifically about when something is a major, a significant transportation project or what's the terminology we use, major or significant, I always, but it's already in the TSP. But the project was in the TSP at a fairly high conceptual level. And then as the, you know, as we know, many of us who've been around these kinds of projects for a long time know that these projects can take decades to come to fruition, right? And over that time, they, they get refined and they, they're, the level of granularity that you were talking about, they get more and more defined. I think in those cases, and, and again, I always bring this up because it is the one example that I'm most familiar with in the time that I've been here with you all is the, the interstate bridge improvement project or the, the replacement project, sorry. And that project, I think, you know, it is, it is a project that fits that bill that you were describing. It is in the transportation system plan currently. It, I, I think that the rubric that we as staff use is if the project is in the plan and the, the way it's shaping up and its design is consistent with the intent that the plan, that was identified in the plan, then in essence, it is still a plan that is, or a project that is consistent with the TSP and support, in support of the comp plan as it was conceptualized. So I, I think that the, I was trying to do a quick search of the TSP to find the references to the, that, that particular project. And many of you know it, you know, probably in some ways, ways better than I. But at the time, it was called the Columbia River Crossing. And that project is in the TSP currently. And the goals and the components, it may have not been all described as one project, but the, but a variety of projects in the TSP ultimately are satisfying, are being satisfied by the proposal of the project as it stands now. So the idea that you have a, a, a bridge that is seismically, you know, size, able to handle seismic considerations that, that also is multimodal, that is bringing with it transit in the form of light rail. It's, it's bringing, you know, bicycle facilities and it's, it's including pedestrian facilities. And so I think that our interpretation would be that the, the project is consistent with the, with the comp plan and the TSP in that regard. And it really isn't changing in that regard. So I know that I see, I see that others want to jump in here and add to this discussion. And so I'm going to stop there, but I, I think that's, that's my interpretation. I would welcome the, the PBOT staff to also let me know if they think that sort of my interpretation of that is, is accurate. And I'm, I'd love to hear more from you all as well.
So we have about five more minutes. And I would like to see if there are other commissioners who have questions or comments before circling back to Commissioner Bevec. Commissioner Patel?
Yeah, mine will be fairly quick. I think it's a Commissioner Patel for the record. I just had a clarifying question. I think Eric, you'd, you'd mentioned it in your presentation about Streets PDX. And can you talk about that a little bit? And, um, can you talk about that a little bit more? Um, I'm wondering if, if, is that like an interactive map that is illustrative of showing how transportation, how, how the TSP goals and policies relate to certain street classifications? Or, you know, how can it be utilized?
I think it's, it's not quite an interactive map that does, well, it's an interactive tool, but it's not quite a tool that, um, relates TSP policies as much as competing, um, uh, competing design classifications. It's really focused on the classifications and the street type and the cross-sections that would fit on typical street widths we have in the city of Portland. And we'd be happy to share the link to the interactive tool and a video that explains it with you, um, so you can, you can get some more exposure to it. But I think it's a really useful tool, but it's not, um, precisely what you described. So I'd want to, I'd want to show you the video.
Okay, that makes much more sense.
But we do also have an interactive TSP where you can find.
Right, and you had, you had mentioned that, right? It's, it's posted on the city's website.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see Vice Chair Pousel has his hand up. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you. Thanks for that. Um, uh, and, uh, thanks for the presentation there. Um, I was just curious, I wasn't quite sure if I missed this, but I didn't know, or, or even if this is the right, the right inquiry for, for what I have to, uh, have to look into. But anyway, I was just wondering about unimproved roads. Is there a planned, I, I, you know, I, 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 I run across, um, uh, neighbors and, uh, you know, in, in my community that, you know, that like, um, you know, they have a hard time living on unimproved roads and, and, you know, um, these roads are, have gravel, um, they have young children, uh, you know, there's dust, uh, that, you know, especially when it's really dry. And I'm wondering if, you know, if that is part of this, uh, future plan on, you know, or the, or the TSP are on, you know, in, in improving these unimproved roads so that, um, you know, uh, folks that live in neighborhoods where these are at, um, can have, you know, I mean, it, it really could be quite unpleasant. Uh, um, I was a mail carrier for, for a brief amount of time and it, it's, it's a really real difficulty. So I was just, I was curious if, if, if there's, uh, if that fits in any of this at all.
Sure, I'll, I'll start and Kristen, uh, another's may weigh in. And, and absolutely, Commissioner, that's, I think, a relevant question here for the TSP, um, and for today. Um, so it, and it's also a little complicated and nuanced, I guess I'll, I'll note, since there's various ways in which those things get built out. Um, and sometimes, you know, some of the, the transportation system is the development, um, efforts, you know, either the homeowner or the developer's responsibility or other things. But certainly we, A, acknowledge that those gaps in, in, in the status of those systems vary and something we're tracking. I think there's also a consideration around some of the, the standards that exist and how you do develop and meet those. And frankly, some of those, um, in various topographies and various areas can be challenging or expensive to meet. And that's partially why you see, um, some of the status quo of where, where it is, because we haven't gotten it to that next level, because it takes quite a lot of investment to get there. So there are policies, for example, that recognize that and try to create more flexibility around some of those standards. So you can maybe start to move toward that in a way that isn't as stair stepped, um, and, and challenging to close the gap on. So that's one way in which we're thinking about it. But especially as we think through that asset management connection to our growth management connection, as I noted, I think that's a key area where we need to think about prioritizing those investments, right? We have both paving lists where we look for where there are safety improvements we can be making, um, joint investment on. Similarly, I think we can look and see where those are and understand if there are, um, you know, public and private investments that might work together to, to do that. We also have connectivity standards that are, um, uh, enforceable and, and connected to some of the other, um, changes we've seen currently around zoning and, and other rules in the state. So I think there's a number of ways and opportunities we need to think through that, um, even as it can be a pretty complicated, um, situation at times to be working through that has resulted in that current set of conditions.
Right, and then also with public funds, we ask ourselves who benefits and who's burdened? And when we have, you know, uh, when building new roads is the most expensive thing that we do and frankly, you know, supports driving, um, then how should we be spending valuable and limited public funds in our transportation system overall when we have tremendous need, unmet need, people being killed and seriously injured on Portland's streets, um, that we have a vision zero for? Um, so when it comes down to it, that's what our transportation system plan says. It says, we look at, at priorities for our transportation system and where we put those dollars. And where we put those dollars first are to make it safer and more convenient for people to walk, bike and get to and from transit in our, um, neighborhood centers and corridors and to, um, uh, prevent deaths and serious injuries. We want to make a more sustainable environment and that I think is, um, one, uh, connection to unimproved right of way is certainly the environmental damage that can happen to, um, our, our stormwater. And of course, we also manage sewers. So there's different trade-offs and aspects there.
Thank you. We are a couple of minutes over time. I know that Commissioner Routh has been waiting, um, to ask a question or make a comment. Commissioner Alexander, were you waiting as well?
Go do it. Go for it. I will suck time.
I, I just, one, thank you for the, with the focus on looking at mass transportation, moving multiple people through a single vehicle. Obviously a bicycle is not a, I mean, it, it's a single individual, but there are cities around the world where the level of bicycle transportation as primary mode within schools, employment and entertainment, uh, you know, we pale in comparison. I mean, really, I mean, as much pride as we take for, for being a, a mobile city, pales in comparison. And then the overlay in terms of health markers for those cities relative to the degree of, of sort of engagement around multimodal transportation, particularly bicycles. Have we looked as we, as we sort of looked to, to reset in 2025 for places like Amsterdam and others, major urban areas where for every vehicle you see, you see 10 bicycles, um, as a primary mode? What are, what are the best practices that we're looking at as we continue to try to evolve this?
I think we'll have an opportunity to come back and talk with you more about bicycling and, um, encourage you to, um, think about attending one of our bicycle advisory committee meetings where we're having these conversations. Um, we have actually seen our bicycle mode share move in the wrong direction. We have a goal of.
Twenty-five percent?
Twenty-five percent. I'm sorry, I just had like one of those moments where you can't read the number. Uh, 25% bike mode share by 2035. And we're actually moving, rather than moving towards that goal, we've actually seen some backsliding. And so we're examining why that is happening in our community and what strategies are needed to, to improve that. Uh, because at the same time, we've seen our bike mode share decline. We've seen the biggest investments we've ever made in that kind of the infrastructure side of biking. We have more miles of protected bike lane, more miles of bike lane overall in our community than we've ever had. And we're not seeing the kind of mode shift we need to see to meet that goal. And so we're asking ourselves some really hard questions at PBO right now about why that is and what we can do to reverse that trend. And we'll be, um, we talked to council about it last week as part of a, um, presentation on transportation decarbonization and we'll be continuing to have that conversation in many forums. And I expect, um, this will be one of those forums.
Thank you.
So I hear you a hundred percent.
Okay, thank you. One, um, Patricia, related to the, uh, IBR, I would love, let, we should just have a beverage sometime. I feel like the difference between, for me, the difference between the dash two and the dash three amendments of the most recent funding bill at the legislature have different relationships to our comp plan. So like, I'm not going to talk about that in this moment because of time, but thank you. Uh, I also want to thank you, just thanks generally, Francesca, a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about the modal plan and I was inartful, so thank you for your grace and also for ensuring that the upcoming TSP, uh, update is going to be delicious because I have no doubt it will happen at a patisserie. Um, and Eric and Kristen, thank you for having offline conversations. Um, since I, I do want to talk, I think the, the conversation around the modal plan is great and substantive. I do want to put a marker down, um, that I understand that the freight modal plan is where it is. I've also had a number of conversations, because we have had, um, as we've discussed, modal plans don't happen all that often and they have happened and they, they have different relationships to our other plans at different times. And so those have, those have, uh, manifested in different legislative ways that have impacted our body or have, like, uh, the bicycle master plan, right, was a, a full legislative process. And I understand from a couple of conversations that that, because that actually was such a large shift, that it did actually impact our comp plan. And so that was the reason for the legislative, uh, process with this body. So, oh, like over a decade ago, uh, the PED plan and, uh, Commissioner Thompson, to your, I'll just, as the former executive director of the Willemette Pedestrian Coalition that became Oregon Walks, we had a lot of conversations about can we use walking? Um, and had a number of conversations with, uh, with folks in disability advocacy and justice communities and, um, and folks were like, you know, walking and rolling, uh, with, um, that we can use walking, recognizing that walking also includes rolling because no one, no one identifies themselves as a pedestrian, just like no one identifies themselves as like, I am a person who drinks water. Uh, same thing. Um, it did not, the PED plan did not have, uh, and I would like, if, if I am incorrect, if I am misspeaking, please let me know. Um, I'm going to take a few minutes, I'm sorry. Okay, I love you very much, thank you. Okay. Uh, and it did not have a legislative process through this, uh, and because it was not, but I also feel, and this is where, whether it is a legislative, whether it actually is a hearing or whether we have a more substantive briefing conversation, okay, I want to put the marker down and we can talk about it when, as we're batching for the TSP, you know, I'm not in a great rush, but how do we step back and like PEDPDX was an incredible, it had incredible community involvement, like the relationship of how walking, how pedestrian lighting, how our street lighting system impacts particularly vulnerable communities and communities in East Portland have been underinvested for so many decades. Like that did not get, I think, the, uh, the highlight, the spotlight that it could have and should have. Um, and how can this body be a partner in helping to highlight and step back and saying, how do these plans, and they are transportation plans of citywide interest, how, how do we take a moment and help people who have not been in the weeds in these long conversations with, you know, tax and CACs and CICs and all these acronyms? How we can step back and say, this is what we, this is on a philosophical level, how, how these systems, how these modes are impacting, how they work within us and through us in, um, in a greater understanding of what the future of our city needs to look like. And as you were saying, Eric, like, yeah, streets are, I looked it up, 20.3% of our city's land use. So it's a big deal. Also, like, how does freight, and then I will stop, I swear to God, uh, uh, how does like freight, transit priority, pedestrian network, they're all the same corridors. And that is why they are high crash corridors, because there's a lot of different modes interacting in very different ways. How do these work with, between each other? What are those opportunities besides the city council and all of these smaller meetings to really highlight, this is what we mean when we need freight and this is how it interacts with walking? And this is how transit access and, um, on-time performance of our, uh, of our high-frequency buses work? So I just want to put a marker down. Thank you very much. I will stop speaking now. Thank you.
And I'll just, can I respond very quickly, briefly? Um, so Steph and I hadn't a chance to chat offline and I'll say the same thing here that I said to Steph on Friday afternoon, which is that I see this group as having two very important roles. One is providing feedback to us as part of our public review processes of our individual plans, quarter plans, modal plans, other things that are refinements to the TSP. And then in helping us to convene the public and thinking about those, those TSP updates, well, technical and major updates and bringing those elements together, um, thinking more broadly about how our system works. And I, I think that that is a really fundamental role of this body. And I would encourage you to think, think with us about how we elevate that role in our TSP updates to make sure that we do do good engagement.
Thank you so much. We look forward to future collaborations and really appreciate the time and presentation today and great discussion. Um, thank you to all the commissioners for your comments and questions. With that, we're going to transition and ask Sandra Wood to please come up and lead us through the bylaws discussion ongoing. This is part two of discussion of the Planning Commission bylaws.
Well, sit down. What's the rest way for me to send some follow-up questions to the team? I had a few discreet questions I want to get. Should I send it through Julie?
Sure, sure. Uh, Commissioner Spivak, yes, that would be great.
Okay, thanks.
And we'll, we'll pass it on to the PBO staff. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Welcome, Sandra.
Thank you. Um, Sandra Wood with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. I am one of the staff that, um, that staffs Planning Commission, as you know. And I have a PowerPoint that I need to share through Zoom, so I'm going to share my screen. See if this is working. Yes, it does. Great, thank you. Um, good afternoon, commissioners. Today we are having, um, another conversation about your bylaws. I think this might be our last conversation. Um, at least that's what I had planned. Um, as you know, we've taken a look at the bylaws before and we, um, have three items left to discuss. One is the practice around providing advice. And I think my colleagues at, um, the Portland Bureau of Transportation really set that up nicely because this is really where, um, I think we wanted to have the discussion similarly to what you were just having previous, um, today. The second, um, item is about a youth commissioner and what the thinking is about that. And the third one was meeting schedule. We've talked about meeting schedule before. Um, I think you all landed on keeping the meeting schedule as is for the commission, but you asked me to look at what other committees and commissions, um, what their meeting schedules were like and to share that. So I have some information and some homework that, um, one of my colleagues did to share with you. Um, so that's today's conversation. Um, decisions you've already made and we've talked about, just to refresh our memory and warm us up to the topic today is, um, on the screen here. We talked about the commission, um, wanting to perform its duties in an inclusive, efficient, effective and equitable manner. Those are the words, um, you all landed on. The second was for the chair to be able to delegate presiding responsibilities to a non-vice chair. So as you know, if the chair isn't here, it would normally go to a vice chair, but you wanted to add that as flexibility into the bylaws. The third was that the commission, um, should vote and have a conversation about who should represent the commission, that other groups, should other groups require it. So those decisions were already made, um, I guess in May. Um, so going right into the three discussion points we have today, um, we had this as a discussion, um, question about the practice of providing advice. Um, what we, the discussion point was basically, how does the planning commission provide advice on plans and policies that are not required to come before the commission? And there were many questions. Some of them are, what are the typical examples of those plans and policies and how do they get added to the planning commission agenda? How does the commission use the comp plan to provide advice? Is public testimony necessary for the commissioner to provide advice, it's for the commission to provide advice? And how is, um, the planning commission's advisory input used or communicated and to whom? Before we delve into that, I wanted to remind the commission of what's in the zoning code and already in the bylaws. There are three powers and duties. The first one is to hold hearing and make recommendations to city council on proposed amendments, um, it's on all of these things that are listed there. That is something that, um, my colleagues previously were just talking about. That's a typical legislative process. The second is to advise the city council on plans and policies regarding a whole slew of issues that are listed. The third is to provide a forum for community members to learn about principles, policies and programs. The third is to provide a forum for community members to learn about principles, policies and programs. So I'm gonna break that down a little bit and describe how, how each of these duties has been enacted in practice. So the first duty of holding hearings and making recommendations on the left column is exactly what the zoning code says. So I won't read that out again. But on the right is a little flavor of what this looks like in the commission room itself. This is basically the city's land use legislative agenda. So a city council member, usually a commissioner in charge of either transportation or planning or land use planning, asks us to work on a certain project, asks the staff to work on a certain project. And that's how we work with the public and then we bring it to the planning commission for a hearing. So when it comes to the hearing, the commission holds a hearing, you deliberate, you make amendments as you see fit and you vote on a recommendation. And then after the meeting, you generally write a transmittal letter to city council. Then after that, the commission's recommendation is the one that is presented to city council. So as opposed to staff's recommendation. So the planning commission may change the recommendation that's, and when staff takes it to the city council, we're representing you. We switch our hats and then we're representing the commission and providing the rationale for the commission's recommendation. We don't say, oh, but staff thought X, Y, Z. We really try to represent the best work of the commission and trust the process. Also, the chair of the planning commission accompanies us to city council and presents on behalf of the commission with staff. And an example of this are the parking compliance amendment project, which was your first legislative project. And Chair O'Mara was going to be at plant council with us. Unfortunately, the council agenda got changed that day and you weren't able to present. But thank you for your flexibility in that. So that's typically how it would have happened. Another example is the transportation system plan, actual legislative amendment that goes to city council as an ordinance. Hopefully, this looks very familiar to all of you and there's, but if there are questions, this may be a good time to ask those questions before we move on to the advising role, which is really the discussion point today.
Actually, I do have a question regarding the chair presentation. Because it's something I didn't think about with the the last city council shift. And of course, that happened kind of last minute. But is the chair able to appoint another member of the commission to make that presentation? And does that need to be represented in the bylaws?
I don't think it needs to be represented. And the chair attending city council isn't represented either. It's just kind of a nice touch to have that formality and that conversation. Certainly, if the project is big and controversial, we generally work with the officers to see what the officer's presence will be. Our most notable one was probably with the residential infill project where we had work sessions even before the hearing. So the council members have had a deep understanding of the work before they heard a lot of testimony. And at the time, our, our chair, Catherine Schultz, was at the work session describing the commission's vote because it was a split vote. But it really, I think, helped the city council understand the trade offs. And to hear it directly from the city, the planning commission chair was, was great. Yeah.
But we've also had representation based on affinity.
What do you mean?
Like gave shoe shifts, for example, presented on West Portland Townsend.
Absolutely, yeah.
Maybe this is part of my follow up from the last presentation is, can we collaborate with PBOT? It feels like when our bylaws ask us to hold the hearing and make a recommendation, largely it's legislative, but sometimes it's not legislative. So a significant transportation project is not a legislative project, yet we're supposed to hold a hearing on it. It's felt to me over the years, that's been very uncomfortable for staff to hold the hearing on a non legislative, yet there it is. Can we collaborate to figure out how to hold a hearing on a non legislative project? And maybe name which which those might be coming up? Because it feels like we haven't had a way to do it and maybe that's part of the reason why it's been anxious. But whenever this has come up in the past, there's been a lot of pressure. You don't do hearings if it's not legislative. And yet there are times where we're supposed to do hearings where it's not legislative. So I'd love to figure that one out, not right now, but just as a, as a plug for some collaboration with PBOT's where it comes up the most, but maybe other places too.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Patricia Deefendorf, for the record, Sandra, I definitely don't want you to weigh in here, but I just wanted, I just had a thought that I wanted to share with, with you. I think this instance, you know, I, I do believe we have struggled with this, this particular provision. It was a topic of conversation as we were developing the new zoning code to, to stand up this new planning commission. I think, I will just candidly say, I think one of the reasons we have struggled with this is because we really want to maintain and protect the legitimacy and the credibility of the commission. And we have not been able to reconcile as staff at least, the idea of holding a hearing when you're, when the, the whatever comes out of the hearing is not necessarily going to change or have, you know, have a place in terms of changing a plan or a recommendation because it is not the legislative process. So I think that, I think that I definitely want to hear what Sandra has to say. And I, I think that we're happy to continue to work on this issue. I think we're just really concerned about having the public come and present and testify to this body if there's not a true opportunity to affect something. And, and if the, if the, if there's no actual legislative action before the commission, then there isn't a something to affect. And I think that's where we struggle and, and we really, I mean, it's really also because we want to maintain the integrity of the commission and its actions and, and the weight of its recommendations when it does make recommendations. So I just kind of want to put that out there, but happy to discuss more.
Less contentious issue, the Burnside Bridge replacement was in his situation, it was not legislative. I don't think we had a hearing. We had a briefing. But we provided guidance to city council.
Yeah.
Recommendations on the project, not legislative, but I think perhaps appreciated. So, so I guess I could see situations where we do take testimony. We provide recommendations to city council and it's not legislative, but it matters because design matters like. And so that was a project where we went through a process which could very well have had a hearing in it. We would have given recommendations to city council and I think it would have been, using our expertise and our ability to listen, nothing legislative about it. So maybe that might, for me, that seems like perhaps a model to look to, to draw from as we figure out how to, how to do this.
So I think that's why we wanted to talk about it during the bylaws, because this has been a gray area. I think what the code, just getting back to what the zoning code says, it's not just in the bylaws. There's the three powers and duties, the holding hearings and making recommendations, the advising city council and the providing a forum for community members. And we've been thinking a lot, this a lot because of the 2040 freight plan also. And whether that should have had a hearing or not, especially since the bike plan did have a hearing. I think the city, we have all been inconsistent. And usually when I, staff talks to me about coming to the planning commission, I start with, well, what are you taking to city council? Because if you're taking a law to city council, which is adopted by ordinance, then the city council needs a recommendation from the planning commission. And that's why I make it a point about it's the planning commission's recommendation that goes. It's not staff's recommendation. In the examples that you're giving, Commissioner Spivak, it's a grayer area because if you were to hold a hearing, you're not the recommending body to city council. You are one voice that can provide input to city council, but it's a different beast because you're not the recommending body. So when we were putting this together and putting more like, what does this look like? We had the responsibility, one of holding hearing and making, making recommendations. Yes, the way I read the significant transportation policies, projects and issues is that those are legislative. Everything else on that list is pretty much legislative, except for street vacations and street renaming. Those are kind of implementation mechanisms. So maybe we can come back, continue this conversation. I'm not saying we have it perfect here, but here's our thinking. The second responsibility is to advise city council on plans and policies. In practice, what this looks like is during a project's public engagement phase, like my colleagues from PBOT were just expressing. And what it looks like, I guess what we're proposing that it looks like is that the commission hears a briefing from staff. They have a discussion and they provide feedback and advice to the presenters. Sometimes the presenters are city staff. Sometimes they could be from a different agency. Maybe it's TRIMET, maybe it's ODOT, Oregon Department of Transportation. After the, this meaning that the commission has, staff will consider and incorporate the commissioner's feedback. And then staff could relay that feedback to city council if they're headed to city council. Sometimes during a project, they're just doing public engagement and they don't even have an audience with city council. So it would be odd for the planning commission to then interact with city council and say, hey, this is what we think about this project when the staff for that project hasn't even had an opportunity to speak to city council. I went through the 2022 agendas for the planning commission, I mean, the Planning and Sustainability Commission, and pulled out these examples of when we, the commission held briefings. The first one was the Oregon State Department of Land Conservation and Development. They were adopting climate friendly, equitable communities rulemaking. So staff from the state came and gave the planning commission some, some, a briefing about that. That has later come across as real legislative changes for the electric vehicle code for the parking project. So it was kind of policy setting at the state that is outside the purview of the planning commission and of city council, but informed our projects. And so I think the Planning and Sustainability Commission wanted, had heard a lot of things in the newspaper, wanted to know what, what's happening with this. So that's one example. Albina Vision Trust is another example. Here's the earthquake ready Burnside Bridge. Again, the planning commission doesn't have a, a role, a formal role, but the project team was doing a lot of engagement and was going to the design commission and the landmarks commission, even if those commissions didn't have a formal role. Interstate Bridge Replacement Project, I'm so glad I put these examples up there. Everyone has already brought them up. Park Rose Community Plan was another one. I would consider this a plan almost with a little P. It's not an amendment to the comprehensive plan. It's not legislative. The Park Rose Community worked really hard on it. We had staff on it who supported their efforts. It's a great plan. It's very advocacy oriented for that. But it's not amending the law that tells private developers what they can and cannot do. The 2040 Freight Plan, as you are more familiar with it. So I guess I'm trying to, along the lines of Commissioner Spivak, what you were saying, can we get some clarity around this? I feel like the first one is legislative, holding hearings. And the second one is maybe a way to provide clarity is that there's a briefing and there's feedback to staff. But once you introduce a hearing, it looks like number one. And it looks like the public number one. And then staff is like, how do I send a notice? And we say, we don't care because it's not a legislative process. And it starts to quack like a duck, look like a duck, but it's not a duck. And so this was, in these conversations, I'm like, maybe we draw a clearer line. And maybe, should I go through number three and then we can have a discussion? The third.
Well, I, I had a question on this, which is that if, if the opportunity for advising in this context, right? You've got several examples here, is the briefing as opposed to the hearing? What is the planning commission's ability or authority to request that, right? So if we're being presented an update and maybe it's not called a briefing formally on the agenda, but we would like it to be a briefing so that we can essentially put on that advising cap? Do we have an ability to indicate that to staff in advance of an agenda? To say, we would actually like this to be a briefing so that we can advise on this specific item?
Did you want to respond? I think this is definitely have, has come up in the past. And I think it's a good place for the, the officers to have a conversation about. And we can definitely find out information about where is that project in the timeline? What, what other engagement is taking place? Again, it gets back to what Patricia was saying about how do we maintain the credibility of the commission and cooperative working relationships? The commission works kind of on behalf of, you know, city council. And does city council want that type of forum to happen? So many projects, sometimes, we've had this with like street renaming, which is clearly within the planning commission's purview, where it can be a really big deal, you know, to rename Stark Street to Harvey Milk. And we want to know where the, when is the press release going out? When do we want the attention to happen at the council stage or at the planning commission stage? So it gets into that also. But I would say, yes.
Yeah, it sounds like it is, it is within our authority or ability, but there's also sort of a case by case analysis that needs to happen that then the discussion should take place at the officers' meeting based on that specific item.
Right.
Okay.
I feel like I've already talked a lot, but I'm gonna, I, thank you for these examples. They're awesome. I think one, so like DLCD, that's state, right? And so in, in some ways, like city council is, is a, is a shareholder, but they are not the ultimate decision maker, right? Albina Vision Trust, I'm trying to think like, how does this relate? Who is the final decision maker, like holder of the authority of the acceptance, implementation, furtherance of these, of these examples, right? Albina Vision Trust, I don't know who we would, I'm assuming, I believe Albina Vision Trust owns its own, but I guess I'm looking at you, Commissioner. Okay. Earthquake Ready is county, right? Burnside Bridge. Interstate is by state. Who even knows? Park Rose Community Plan, same, same kind of thing. Does Park Rose, does Historic Park Rose own it? Like, is it ultimate with the cities to implement? I feel like that, that's also been kind of a sticky place for me. Like, what is our, what is our role in community, community owned plans? I think it's, I feel like it's where we, I think we want to go in a lot of ways, like the community owned, like the self determination of community plans. 2040 Freight, I do feel like city council does own that and that is, that's why it keeps sticking with me. That it's like, that's why it keeps sticking. So I just want to say, like, of all of these, the 2040 Freight, like a modal plan is owned by the city and it is the final decision maker. So I just want to put, again, the marker down.
But the problem is that the 2040 Plan is not going to counsel as an ordinance, so there is no final decision. It can be an acceptance of a report.
Yep.
Right? And so what is the decision at hand?
Right. And do people who are engaging at the beginning of that conversation understand that art when they are thinking of what their relationship to community involvement along a process is? So that's another, just want to like, when I'm looking at this, it's like, yes, there's a lot of apples and oranges and bananas and plums. And, yeah.
Right. And that's why I always start with staff of, what are you taking to city council? If I'm changing, if they're changing a code, then does the planning commission have purview and therefore a hearing and therefore a notice and the whole system is set up for that? If it's not an ordinance, it gets squishy. It's like, hmm, it's.
Just the added comment, Commissioner Patel, for the record, like you mentioned in bucket one, the previous text, that's all, when read in context, it's, it's all legislative. So that's why it, it, it seems to be clear that the 2040 Freight Plan wouldn't necessarily fall as a legislative review subject to public hearings.
Right.
But if we're talking about trust and credibility with community members, like that's.
Right. Yeah. There could be, yeah, I mean, it could be open for interpretation. Maybe there's a way that we could incorporate language in the bylaws where we can request maybe feedback on whether a public hearing should be held on certain significant policies.
Can I, sorry, Patricia Diefenbach, for, for the record. Just, I just wanted to make another observation about this list of examples to the point of, of what you were saying. Commissioner Ralph, I think, so the issue, you brought up a couple of different strains. One issue is, does the community understand when they're giving all of their time to give input to a plan like the freight plan? Do they understand that the, what the outcome is, that it's, it's not like a, it's not an adopted plan in the way that we understand it to be, that it amends the comprehensive plan and has the weight of that, right? So I think, I, I don't know the answer to that, how they, how they explain and conduct, you know, how they explain what the outcome is of this process when they do that. But I do think it's, it's true and fair that they should, that people should understand that. I think you also mentioned something really interesting about community-led plans. And looking at this list and, and trying to understand what are the commonalities or differences among these examples in this list, right? Which I think is a really good way to think about it. And one of the, one of the trends that I'm seeing is that some, some of these things, whether or not the city owns them per se. Sometimes the briefing is a signal that it's, 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 it's providing background and information that will be pertinent to the commission for something that is likely to come to them in the future, come, come to this body in the future. So let's take maybe for, because I happen to know a bit about the Albina Vision Trust project for, as an example. And, and maybe juxtapose that with the Park Rose Community Plan, okay? So the Albina Vision Trust is a community-led visioning process for a site and/or a, a small, you know, a geography in the lower Albina area. And it is something that ultimately is, is possible that it will come formally to the city as a legislative action in that it might require some comprehensive plan or zone changes to make that vision be realizable, right, for it to come into fruition. That, that's an example of how we work, when we're working as a staff in the bureau, working very closely with, with the Albina Vision Trust and that community-based organization on this plot process and not just BPS, but other bureaus as well. And it might actually, as I, as I mentioned, come, you know, result in a legislative process that is needed. By contrast, the Park Rose Community Plan was, was a different approach to planning where this, where BPS got a grant to allow the community really to do their own visioning process. And, and as Sandra said, it did not result in, you know, codified land use changes or changes to the comp plan such that it changed or affected the way in which private property can be developed. So it's, it's really more of a community vision and a community visioning and planning process. And Commissioner Ralph, you asked a question of like, what is our role in that? And I think at the time that that briefing came to you, what we wanted to do was create a moment to allow the community to spotlight the work that they've done and to share with you the work that they've done and to show the partnership between the city and that community in doing that plan. Despite the fact that it didn't have, you know, legislative process associated with it. I think what it means and, and the way we presented it and characterized it to the commission at that time was that it, what it means is that having, sometimes having a plan that documents like a, a vision, a goal, a project, so for example, we want, we want improved sidewalks in this community, right? That could be something that the city could use to rely on when pursuing funding for some capital projects. The city could say, you know, there's a, there's a, a community plan that we can point to, some kind of planning process. It's, it's perhaps stronger if it's a city adopted plan with, and it's part of like, you know, a capital improvement project, uh, plan or the TSP even, but either way, it gives us something to be able to turn to and, and show that there's, there's will and desire for this thing to happen. So I think that's how we use a community plan like that as opposed to the city's formal plans.
Okay, this is, I'm loving this conversation. It's really hard. Going, the Park Rose Community Plan, perfect, just wonderful. And the fact that it's right next to the 2040 Freight, thank you, it's a gift. So we're looking at, so Park Rose did their own visioning through the Park Rose Community Plan. And, and you know, what, what does land use look like in, in that area? I, I'm, I went to Park Rose High School, have deep feelings about it. Then we have the freight, you look at the Columbia Corridor. And, you know, there's a lot of conversations right now around Prologis, you know, the, the old Kmart site. So just like, also, maybe just a, also a question, like what is, what can and should our role be as a planning commission? Like, do we, do we have any part of that conversation where two parts of different conversations that have come to this body, even as briefings, when we see some tension? What is our role in, in acknowledging that? I don't have any answer for that. I'm just.
Oh, I'm not sure I have an answer, but no, actually our bylaws have the answer. The city council adopted Title 33 changes that says, we will hold hearings and make recommendations to city council on blah, 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 significant transportation policies, projects and issues. Now the question is, what's on that list? And I know that that list is not just legislative things. So there's a, there's a, I, I understand staff's argument that if we start weighing in on non-legislative things, then that compromises our integrity or whatever our respectiveness by city council. But I also see the city council adopted this, that says we should hold hearings and make recommendations on some things that are not legislative. So I'm trying to hold those things and try and see what to do with it. I don't have a clear answer. I, personally, I think that's really helpful to have clear lines. These are not the lines I would draw quite that you've got up there. I would probably have another category, which is we hold the hearing and it's not legislative. Because it seems like city council has asked it to do that in their, in Title 33.
And to be honest, we tried that. And we played it out. Let's say Interstate Bridge Project, let's say we.
Let's go back further in time, the streetcar system. Apparently there were hearings over that. Was that a brouhaha? I wasn't there for it, so I can't speak to it.
I don't remember.
Was that?
I asked Chris at one point, when, or was it a major transportation project?
I, I think that, so I think certainly in the past, at the old planning commission and the Planning and Sustainability Commission, we would just have not been consistent and I think that's what's caused some of the confusion. Another piece of the confusion is that when you hold a hearing, let's say you do hold a hearing. Is it just the hearing part or is it the deliberation, amendment and vote part? When we say hearing, do we mean deliberation, amendment, vote?
I do not mean deliberation, here, amendment and vote. In my, in my, in my interpretation, it is exactly what the bylaws say, provide advice. So I'm not assuming that a hearing, I know that historically in the land use side, it always goes to that process. But that doesn't mean to me that it means that we're going to mark up the drawings for the bridge and say like, it, it means we're providing.
A public forum?
A public forum. And, and I should say, one, one perspective, I'll just add on to the, the mix is from the public's perspective. Like, we're supposed to be listening to the public. The last time, as the IBR example on this, the last time the public got to see this and present to the Planning and Sustainability Commission, the description of the project was, there'll be a new bridge over, over the Columbia River. I mean, maybe it was like a couple words longer than that. When the Rose Quarter Project came as part of the TSP, it says, we'll do a new interchange with the Rose, I-45 goes, like, that was it. It was like, so if the public wanted to weigh in at that point to the former planning commission, that's all they had to go on. So part of the argument I'm, I'm making for an opportunity for public input is to say, let's be honest with the public. They didn't have almost anything to go on when it was such a conceptual item, when it, when it went, that's when it went through the legislative process. Is when it was just like a line or two. It's not just a line or two, it's a significant project. That's one of the reasons I think it makes sense for the planning commission, because there's all sorts of planning implications. Street system connectivity, mode split, I mean, all these, even the zoning of the new land that might be created or removed. There's big planning impacts that are not even contemplable when all you see is a two-line code. And that's where I hope that city council would, would, would look for us to pre- vet, just like we pre- vet so many other less significant issues, frankly, before I guess the council.
But so in your mind, if, if there was a hearing held at the planning commission and you, and then the testimony is over. And then you just all have a conversation, but you don't vote and you don't, what, what does it look like after that?
Oh, I, I guess, I'm not proposing to use this meeting to design the process. I want to collaborate with P-Bot and staff to design a process the worst. But my instinct is that we would have a vote on it, just like we have votes on, we've voted on other things that are not legislative. So I think that we would probably, maybe it would end up being sort of a letter with recommendations to city council. And in some cases, the city council is not the final arbiter, right? That on the bridges, they're not the final arbiter on the bridge, like, there's only so much the city can do. But that's where we did provide a lot more clarity in this set of bylaws is that our recommendation is to city council. So for all those projects listed on the last slide, city council, as Commissioner Ralph pointed out, has very different, some big roles, sometimes very small role. We would just be advising, what did the city do with respect to the Burnside Bridge or with respect to DLCD's climate-friendly rulemaking? And some of them, the city doesn't have a lot of latitude, but we keep providing guidance on what to do with the authority that they do have.
And do you think the other commission should also hold hearings, like the design commission or the, or the landmarks commission?
Only if it says so in the titles.
Their bylaws say that they provide advice on design and, for example, the earthquake-ready Burnside Bridge is a historic landmark.
Well, that had to go through them for a design process, right? That, that's what I recall, yeah.
Oh, the historic review, right.
I'm just going to Title 710, that chapter, to see what our jobs are. But it seems like some of these come to us.
Commissioners, can I ask a question and maybe make another observation? So Commissioner Spivak, I'm just curious to know, you're, you're saying, you're looking at this language and you're seeing something that says this commission can hold hearings on things that are not legislative.
Sorry, not that one, the other, the prior.
This one.
There's a different screen.
Which, what about the words here? Can you, can you just point out specifically?
Hold hearings and make, you got, that's it, that's it, yeah. Hold hearings and make recommendations to city council on proposals. Do not to come, and then jump ahead to
It's this part.
Significant transportation policies, projects and issues. And I think what we're seeing is a, I, I would say that some of those things are probably not legislative. And yet it's on the list of things we're supposed to hold hearings on.
Transportation then, right? That's, I mean, those words are just related to transportation.
Yes. Although I saw another slide where transportation wasn't included in that list, but, yeah, this one, this one is in there.
It's not because it's up above. And, and we made that, we kind of made that nuance and finessed that in the code amendments that led to the creation of this commission. Because we were trying to get a little closer to defining this, this very discussion. But can I just make another observation? And I think it's, it's great and fine that we continue to talk about this and, and, you know, your suggestion of, of continuing to work with P-Bot. We told P-Bot we want to continue to work with them as staff to figure this out. So I, I think that that is, you know, something that if you would grant us the grace of, of spending a little more time thinking it through and then, and then maybe we can come back, you know, at some point when we have something to share and get your, you know, kind of inputs on. But I, I would like to just maybe offer a couple of other points for consideration, right? So I think when, when we give the example of, of projects, can, can you go to the next slide, sorry Sandra, just to have the list again? When you look at these projects, particularly the projects where, again, even the city council is not the arbiter, the ultimate decision maker, right? It's, it's very, you know, it, it can sometimes get pretty complex to have the, for example, the city's planning commission weighing in in whatever form we might be thinking of, whether it's, it's a vote, it's a letter. When it, you know, not even the city's legislative body is able to do that. And there may be other inputs from the city that are occurring, that are the, the more official lines of communication into a project. So I, I just want, I just want to kind of like, you know, recognize the complexity of that. That the commission is, is a, is a creature of the city, you know, and is, is when, when you, when the commission speaks, whether it's a recommendation or, or if it's a letter, people will take that as a, you know, a position of the city, when the city maybe is having, you know, another position or other forums for giving input to a process. And so that gets pretty complicated and, and can, you know, create some situations that are, that are hard to navigate. The other thing I would like to point out is it, just because the commission doesn't hold a hearing, doesn't mean there are not forums for the conversation. So, you know, if the goal is really to create space for community and public to know, I mean, I know that there are probably differing opinions about those forums, right? But it's not to say that there are not forums for the public to both learn about, hear, give input to. And I think the Interstate Bridge is a, a good example of that. I mean, the state, it's a by-state to your, to your point, Commissioner Roth. I mean, Ralph, there's two states trying to navigate each other to, to make this project happen. And there's a lot of, there's a huge outreach armed to that and a lot of events and, and public, you know, spaces. So I think we also have to acknowledge that sometimes the public dialogue in that space is, is happening in other places. And then I will make one final, sorry, I, I just want to really try to help us because I'm also really digging deep and trying to soul search here. And so I want to just, you know, present like another lens to look at this by, which is, you know, going back to the Rose Quarter. Commissioner Spivak, you, you mentioned Rose Quarter. And what I would say about that is, that is a line on a map with a very little bit of description, as you described. But that project is likely, again, I'm going to leave here and go to a meeting where we're going to talk about that. And that project is going to result in probably some comp plan changes and zoning changes. And creation of new land is going to be, need to be zoned. So it's not, you know, all of these things, I think, remember the, in earlier conversations, we had the like, the kind of above the line and the, the below the line, the things that are squarely like in the comp plan and are legislative. And then there's, there are things that there's, there are things that happen in the periphery or in the background that eventually will come to this body. Because they, they will necessitate zoning code change or comp plan change. And that's the time for this body to weigh in on those things. So I just wanted to offer all of those things in no particular order, just to, to help with the, with the dialogue on this, on the subject.
Thank you, Patricia. I'm wondering, does it make a difference if we don't call it a hearing? And for example, as an additional bullet point on this slide, in practice, commission may request or invite public comment or public testimony. Because I know some of it is like, we're trying to take it out of the legislative process. The hearing notice and all of that is very legislative and it drives staff towards a very specific process. If we not, if we avoid the term hearing and call it public testimony, public comment. I think that sort of honors the intent that we're trying to achieve here, which is as part of our role of advising, we would like to hear from the community, right? Does that have to be called a hearing? Or can we call it public, we want to invite the public to comment or to testify on this? Maybe testify also is too legislative.
It could help. It still raises the question of how do we notice it? Is it just the people who happen to be here that day get to comment? Or are we advertising it as such an opportunity on the tail end? I think we need to do some more work on what does it look like at the tail end, like Commissioner Spivak was suggesting, that there is a discussion. There is a letter, there is a vote. And so there's the front end and the tail end in addition to what happens in, in the room. Maybe I can move us off of this. I'm not saying we've solved it and I have it perfectly here at all. I do want to share with you number three. It sounds like, so let me share with you number three first. And which is the third role that the code says that the commission has, which is providing a forum for community members to learn about principles, policies, programs that promote sound land use planning practices. And in our mind, this is kind of an ongoing function as all of these meetings are public meetings and provide the community with opportunities to learn. Of course, the public, we send public notice of the agendas and we provide that out, that online. We email it and mail it. It's published in the Daily Journal of Commerce. The meetings are also broadcast by our wonderful colleagues back there, an Open Signal on chapter, on channel 30, I think, Sunday mornings or something, if you're, something like that. It's, we're also live streaming today, it's recorded on YouTube and it's archived in the city's system. So people are listening to the, this conversation and we were thinking about, well, what does this look like? And Patricia suggested, well, this is what the commission does all the time. So I just wanted to kind of wrap up that conversation. It sounds to me that there might be some changes in the bylaws that we want to make. But we just don't want to design the system at this. but we just don't want to design the system at this moment in time in this meeting. So does that sound right to you all? That this, this section might need some extra flavor in the bylaws? Or are you thinking the bylaws are okay because they just mentioned these three things? And that we could adopt the bylaws without clarification? Or we could spend some more time at a future meeting discussing this? Or in the officers' briefing, discussing it to bring back to the bigger group? Or maybe a subset of people? Of commissioners, I should say.
I think there is still discussion to be had regarding the hearing opportunity under the non-legislative and whether or not we, we add something to that section two that is not a hearing, not calling it a hearing. So could I request that staff maybe connect with city council and just talk about that from sort of a legislative? Before we finalize bylaws?
Yeah, Patricia Deefender, for the record, I, I think what I would say, I would say perhaps a couple of things. One is, we, in addition to the bylaws, we also talked about a sort of more of a guidelines, practice document. So I would offer for your consideration. It may be that the bylaws, you know, are fine the way they are and we continue to work on this issue. Because I think it would be nice to have adopted bylaws at some nearer term. And that we can continue to work on this issue and perhaps incorporate that into the more living, breathing guidelines document as we, as we find a path forward. I, I, I think this, this topic or this possibility of having non-legislative forum for public comment, I'm not sure that it's really a conversation with council so much as it is us being very clear amongst ourselves about what it is, what, what our intentions are around that and what it means and what it doesn't mean. And what it means for the public. Because the public wants to come and testify in a space where they know that they are going to have material influence or impact. And that's where we, frankly, as staff, get a little bit concerned. Is that we want the people, when, when the public comes to testify here, we want that to be meaningful and have impact. And it's, it's hard to see exactly how that works in a situation where you don't have legislative authority. So if you could just, I know we have really been around and round on this and I recognize that. And especially those of you commissioners who've been with us, you know, from, in the past iteration of this commission. And now you've really hung in with us for, you know, a lot of dialogue around this. But I, I do want to have some opportunity to confer with colleagues and, and see how we can, how we can try to get there. And also, I, I think it is worth like some deeper dives, maybe in an officer meeting and/or in a, a working group of this, of this commission. But maybe we could do a little more investigation before we can, you know, convene something like that, if that's, if that's something that the commission wants to do. So those are, those are my thoughts on where we are in this moment.
I'm supportive of that. As long as the bylaws don't prohibit us from asking for that comment, right? Or, or testimony, whatever we want to call it. We could finalize the bylaws and have that discussion as part of the officers' meeting and potentially add this language to the operating guidelines. Do any other commissioners have questions or concerns with that approach?
Yeah, I think it should be in the bylaws, sorry. My, my sense is that this was a big discussion point when we were doing the Title 33 amendments. And we have this language in the Title 30 amendments to not have, I, I guess I'd have to, I honestly, I should look back at what the bylaws actually say. But if the bylaws set up a system where all legislative hearings, all hearings are legislative and everything else is just advisory note, if, if, if that's what it reads like and these, these boxes on the screen make it sort of read that way, then I, then I would want to have a, is this the, this is Title 33, right?
This is Title 33, which is duplicated in the bylaws and this is all it says.
Okay, okay, there's not, the, the not associated text, anything like that?
No.
Then, okay, I, I'll look it over, maybe that's fine. Yeah, I'm happy to be part of a discussion group on it. And I love the idea of giving different names for things and being very clear with the public and council. But I, I don't like the idea of, of, of leading out that opportunity for public input. Thanks.
Quick comment, Commissioner Patel, for the record. No, I agree with that approach. I think for some background info, information for context for investigating, since this is code language, it might be good to get some, you know, feedback with the city attorney's office on whether the, you know, whether we can hold hearings on non-legislative issues and whether it's consistent with the code.
I think that's part of the investigation we'll do.
Yeah. And I will, I'll just share an example that I had recently when we were doing the design overlay zone amendments. We were working with both the Planning Sustainability Commission and the Design Commission. The code language was within the planning commissions, purview. We got to the Design Commission because we were working with them and giving them a briefing and working through some issues and getting their feedback. And they, being kind of polite people, saw people in the audience and says, does anybody want to comment? People came up and commented. We hadn't noticed it as a public hearing, which made me like, ooh, okay. Now, I haven't noticed this as a public hearing with the project record. The commission agreed with one of the testifiers and had a back and forth with one of the testifiers. We took some of that information and we went back to our planning commission conversations. And the planning commission didn't agree with that. So we moved forward with the planning commissions, who had the authority and was the recommending body to city council. We get to city council, that person comes and testifies at city council. Staff isn't representing the commission's opinion. And I'm like, no, you're confused, that was the Design Commission, that wasn't the real hearing. They sit around this dais also. It looks just like this. It creates confusion. And that's where I, I keep coming back to, the clearer lines might be, is better.
I agree, there absolutely has to be a process and consistency. I'm curious though, because I have seen, for example, Portland Housing Bureau, their policy council, I believe, just has a standing part of every agenda, which is open testimony. And so is that something we could potentially explore as well? Where it's just, you know, top of the agenda, the public knows, right? They receive the agenda, there's a, a standing opportunity to provide testimony. It doesn't mean that commissioners have to respond or agree or engage in discussion, but it just enables a standing time with consistency where the public are welcome to provide that comment.
And city council does that too, the communications at the beginning. So we can, and that came up during our discussions of how to make the commission, this commission, more accessible to the public. And so maybe that's something we can explore in that, and I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's an interesting thing to explore. I think that's doable.
Yeah. So the other, so I think we're done with that topic. It is three o'clock and I want to be mindful of people's time. The other two topics are pretty shorter. We can continue at the next meeting. Or maybe it might take 15 minutes? It's the youth commissioner and it's meeting times, actually. What, point three doesn't, right, unless, yeah. Do we, do you have 15 minutes and should we just do the last two points?
I'm able to stay.
Yeah? Okay, let me start with point three first, because that's definitely easy. At our last commission, um, meeting, we talked about what the commission's meeting times were. You know, you meet the second Tuesday during the day, such as this meeting, the fourth Tuesday in the evenings, beginning at five o'clock. You ask when other committees and commissions meet. There are, I think there's 96 commissions. We, and we pulled out the ones that are more, kind of more alike to the work that you do. And here are their times that they meet. Many of them during the day, except for the Community Involvement Committee meets at, at 5:00 PM. The rest of them meet during the day.
PSEF is evening.
Is PSEF there?
And these are all monthly, monthly times for these commissions?
Bi-weekly, some of them?
Oh, there's, I see, I see the note there now. Right, some are, some are bi-weekly, some are monthly.
Yeah, some are monthly, PSEF, you're right, is monthly. Does that change your opinion, I guess, is the?
Your preference? I think this is really helpful confirmation that the staggered meeting times that we're offering is a good effort at accessibility for different schedules. So I'm, I'm comfortable with proceeding without a schedule change. Okay, I'm saying thumbs up.
Thank you. So going back to discussion point number two, which is about youth commissioners. We've had a youth commissioner on the commission for, I don't know, 10 years or so. And Julie reminded me that we aren't the ones who appoint commissioners. And so while we're having the conversations in the context of the bylaws, it's really the prerogative of the mayor to appoint commissioners. Our goal has been to have a youth commissioner, and what we mean by youth commissioners, age is 18 to 25 at the time of appointment. And they have filled two-year terms. And that has, you know, we're planning for the future, so that makes sense. But appointments are made like by the mayor. So I know Commissioner Ralph, you're the one who wanted to have this discussion, so I'll turn it over to you. If you had any thoughts?
I think it's a great idea. I think they've been, generally, I think it builds a bench. And I think youth voices are critical in planning conversations. And I'm happy to, but I have talked a lot today, I'm just gonna...
Commissioner Alexander, for the record, see, I did it. I'm teachable. I, I think it's a great idea as well. I am curious as to why the, the age range was selected as 18 to 25. I, I, you know, I look at the, the school board. I, I mean, I, I'm thinking that it might be a younger individual. This, this does not, these are adults. I mean, the, the description of youth just doesn't translate very clearly to me. And even if we just drop the floor, if there's some reason that the 25 is a threshold. But I, I just think it excludes, you know, when I think about youngsters at Harriet Tubman or, I, I mean, so many of the things that are happening within the city around youth or even Albana Vision. I would think that there might be an opportunity to sort of import people who are just generationally a bit below this.
And initially, I believe, when we started our youth commission program, we had a youth planning program in the bureau where we had, we worked with high school students for a variety of high schools. And they would come sometimes as a group and testify and before the commission. And when we started the youth commissioner, um, um, program here at the planning commission, part of the feeling was, it's a huge learning curve. And the daytime meeting was also, most youth are in school during that day. High schoolers would be in meetings during that day. So those were a couple of the things that contributed to the, to the age range.
No, I, I, the learning curve I can appreciate, even if you're not 18. But I do think that there might be an opportunity to just sort of harvest from a, a number of different sources, somebody who is really well-appointed for this.
I would support lowering that to 16 to 25. I'm not sure if there's any requirements in terms of participation on city commissions that require that age 18 or not. But I think if we lower to 16, it would, you know, give the opportunity. Right, and then that person can hopefully determine as part of their application process, you know, whether that's a conversation with their, their teacher that, hey, once a month, I, I'll need to miss class for three hours, but this is a really great, you know, opportunity, that they could sort of navigate that schedule challenge. But I agree that if we're just looking at 18 to 25, we are excluding the high school age, which to me as well speaks more of that youth demographic.
So getting back to the administrative part, is this something, is there something we want to say in the bylaws knowing that we aren't the ones appointing a commissioner? Or is this something that we add to the operating, what are we calling them?
Operating guidelines?
That one.
So in our bylaws, we don't specify, for example, one representative from affordable housing. We're not, we're not affinity-specific in any way. And I do see this as being a little bit more affinity or, you know, identity-specific, right? And so it, it might actually not align with the rest of our bylaws, but might be more appropriately placed in the operating guidelines in terms of this is an ambition of the commission. It is a goal for us to have a youth commissioner that is recruited and part of the commission actively. Okay?
Okay.
I guess I'm clarifying, when city council, they make the appointment, whatever document they're going to look at is the one I want it to be in, since it's not in Title 33. So if they're actually going to look at our, I'm just wondering, are they actually going to look at our operating instructions? Or they'll, maybe staff will communicate it? My, my only reason to put in the bylaws is it's more likely that, okay, if you make an appointment, you look at the bylaws to see who goes and what, what guidance serves for slots. If you feel like the communication would happen without putting it in there, then no need. I'm seeing Julie suggesting that, you don't need to put it in there.
I was going to say, for, for the record, Patricia Deefender, I would say that the only thing they would look at is the code. So, I mean, I think that's, I, I'm not sure that that is, you know, staff assists in the process and I think has, has the ability to convey the aspirations of the commission in this regard. So I think that as long as it's, you know, we've been doing it in practice, even though it's not stated anywhere. So I, I, myself, as a, as just a person, believe that if we put it in our operating guidelines, made sure that it was clear that that's the aspiration of the commission, that that is good from our perspective and we would do all we could to, you know, advance that. So I would just...
Great. So just to sum up, where we are with this, of the three items we discussed, the youth commissioner doesn't result in changes to the bylaw, the time schedule doesn't result in changes to the bylaw, and the advising role, where do we land on that? We are going to talk to the officers about it. And that's possibly in the guidelines and possibly?
I think we were in agreement that it does not need to be specified in the bylaws, right? Commissioner Spivak, you took another look at that language you thought might have been conflicting. And that we do want to have further conversation at the officers' meeting about whether it belongs in the guidelines. And then there were a few areas of follow-up, including Commissioner Patel, you had a recommendation around city council, looking at code and language for hearings.
City attorney.
Sorry, city, city attorney. And then the question of feasibility of just adding an open public comment period to each agenda. There are a few follow-ups there that we want to have.
And I have those written down. But it sounds like we can proceed with updating the bylaws based on all the previous conversations and we can get those out to you for a vote at your next meeting.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, that will feel good, I have to say. To have adopted bylaws and then we can continue working. I completely hear you, Commissioner Spivak, on, on this. And maybe we can come up with creative ways to, to provide a service to the public on, you know, more than just one line on a transportation project, when it's starting to get more meaty and what that looks like. So thank you all very much for indulging me on these, on these details.
Thank you so much for guiding us through it. And with that, we will adjourn today's planning commission meeting. Thank you.